Everyone, welcome to the Cupertino City Council Regular Meeting. Today is January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Chow, thank you. Councilmember Fruen.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now, we are very happy to have one ceremonial items, and we like to welcome our Captain Neil Valenzuela. Can I spell it correctly, say it correctly? To welcome him back to Cupertino and also to serve us as Captain of West Valley Patrol Division of Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office. We're all going to come and take a picture with you, but Captain Neil, please say a few words.
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you very much for the honor of having me and accepting me to be your Chief of Police, so to speak. So I'm glad to be back. I had a nice little break at Stanford, but I'm glad to be here at the community that I love. So thank you.
So we really look for your service, and we hope that when we see you, it's a happy occasion. We're not going to get a ticket from you, so we're all going to come and take a picture with you.
No ticket book, I promise.
And welcome you back to Cupertino. We look forward to working with you closely for our public safety and to serve our city.
Thank you very much.
So first, let's take a picture, then we can ask you to say another few words to our residents.
Yes.
I really want to welcome you because you are the icon of our public safety, and our residents look forward to your service. And I'd like you to just kind of introduce yourself a little bit of your experiences with Cupertino.
Sure. Hello, everyone. Captain Neil Valenzuela. I've spent over twenty years with the sheriff's office, primarily here in the city of Cupertino as a patrol officer. I was a detective here. I was a sergeant here for a little bit. I served as a lieutenant, Assistant Division Commander, with now Under Sheriff Ken Binder. I led our Internal Affairs Unit for about five years, and then I wanted to return back here to West Valley. I worked with Captain Rich Shirena, who has moved on as the Investigations Division Commander. So after my promotion to captain, I was moved to Stanford, and I requested to come back here and work with this community. Thank you, guys.
Welcome back, Neil.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we are going to move to postponement and orders of the day. Do we have any postponements, the orders of the day proposed? City Manager.
No postponements, Mayor.
Okay, so I'd like to make an order of the day proposal. We have a couple items at the end of the agenda, which is public hearings, item number twenty-seven, and ordinance and action items number twenty-eight. I'd like to move them, both of them, right after the oral communications, so we can get the business done before we go to the consent agenda. May I have a second, please?
I have a second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Mohan seconded. Let's vote by, any discussions? If not, let's vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, so let's go to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council, but not on the agenda. The total time for oral communication will ordinarily be limited one hour. Individual speakers, please turn your cards to the city clerk or raise your hands in Zoom. I would like to start the oral communication, and if you would like to speak, please raise your hand or turn the card in within five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, so we will go to Zoom first. The first three speakers will be Wallace Alvier, Richard Adler, and Rose Grimes. Wallace, please go ahead.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for your service to the community. As you may know, Santa Clara County Supervisor Joe Semidian has three goals for the Lehigh Cement and Quarry in the hills to our west: to revoke the cement plant permit, close the quarry now that Lehigh has stopped mining, and begin reclamation on the property. I urge this council to support those goals and to encourage the county to add one more item, namely to prevent a proposal by Lehigh to turn the quarry into a for-profit landfill, trucking in millions of tons of dirt over the next thirty years to fill up the gaping hole left by mining, when there is plenty of fill on the property to achieve this. Given what we have experienced in the Bay Area the last three weeks with flooding and sinkholes, there will likely be growing demand for clean fill. A current project to raise the levy in Alviso alone will use an estimated three hundred thousand cubic yards of clean fill. There must be a better use for clean fill and trucking it into the Lehigh Quarry when Lehigh's current reclamation plan states there's enough fill on the property to do this. Now that the limestone to make cement has been exhausted, Lehigh wants to start a new landfill business that will increase traffic in our community and delay the reclamation of this property, on this property. It's time to close this facility. Please support Supervisor Semidian's goals to revoke the cement plant permit, stop the mining, begin reclamation, and also urge it to not approve a new landfill business on this property. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Wallace. Next, we have Richard Adler, followed by Rose Grimes, followed by Louise Sedati. Welcome, Richard.
Thanks, thank you, and thank you to the council. My name is Richard Adler, and I'm a resident of Cupertino for over twenty-four years. And more than a decade ago, a group of Cupertino residents, which included myself and Wallace Alvier, who just spoke, founded an activist environmental organization called Bay Area for Clean Environment, or BASE, that was specifically intended to call attention to the really serious problems of pollution that were being caused by the operation of the Lehigh Quarry and cement plant, and to advocate for greater regulatory effort, and particularly by Santa Clara County, which is the lead agency. Now, when we started this over a decade ago, we were kind of lonely voices, but over time found a number of allies, including, very importantly, the city of Cupertino, that became active in trying to make Lehigh more accountable for the impact of its activities on the surrounding community. And two years ago, as a result of a major accident, the damage to cement plant, Lehigh shut down the plant. And just at the end of last year, Lehigh announced that they did not plan to restart the operation. And the cement plant has really been the major source of contamination and pollution in our area. Joe Semidian, as Wallace has just mentioned, has now become very active in advocating that we need to go further, that this isn't, the struggle isn't over, but we need to ensure that the cement plant is closed permanently, that mining is permanently stopped at the quarry, and that restoration begin immediately. It's important to note that although active mining terminated at Lehigh nearly three years ago, in two thousand and twenty, we're still waiting for the reclamation effort to start, as is spelled out in their approved two thousand and twelve reclamation plan. It needs to be carried out to protect the view shed in the ridgeline protection deed, because the ridgeline has already crumbled fifty to seventy-five feet and continues to be a serious risk. The county needs to insist that Lehigh now begin the reclamation project, and also, as Wallace has said, to oppose the plan to turn the quarry into a for-profit landfill. There are many reasons why that's a bad idea. Cupertino has been an important and effective advocate in calling for stronger regulation of Lehigh, and I urge the council to continue playing its role even in this new and hopefully final stage of Lehigh's history. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Next, we have Rose Grimes, followed by Yukushima, followed by Seema Linskog. And our final two speakers will be Tessa Parish and Lisa Warren on Zoom. Welcome, Rose.
Thank you very much. Good evening, city council members, and happy two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you most sincerely for your energies devoted to our city. I agree with the previous two speakers on Lehigh and support Supervisor Semidian's efforts, but that's not my subject tonight. Rather, I'm here to again voice my agreement with the popularly supported, in fact, majority-supported Blackberry Farm Plan option that transitions Blackberry Farm from its current golf course operation to a natural habitat with non-intrusive public enjoyment of trails, vistas, and open spaces. While the majority of Cupertino residents polled by city staff share my view, no doubt for a variety of reasons, such a cross-section is not always available to speak directly to the council during meetings. They're out there, but not always able to be in here, even virtually. While there are many reasons for selecting the natural habitat option presented by city staff to the council, today I'll focus on the impact to Cupertino quality of life caused by undue disturbance to the habitat we share, the habitat all around us. A recent scholarly article in the journal American Scientist describes how wildlife, from insects to birds to small mammals and larger predators, adjust to living alongside human development. Characteristically, birds and animals seek to avoid people, not only their immediate presence, but also their distant sounds and their artificial light. We generally do acknowledge that insects, birds, and animals contribute to our quality of life, and they, like us, are adjusting to changing climate and water scarcity, water scarcity being a repeated way of life in California despite recent storms. Besides these challenges, human construction and development activities are altering the roaming behaviors and activity levels of insects, birds, and animals. Changes can force them further into conflict with human neighbors. The solutions we must strive to prioritize are those which lead to the greatest good. Providing isolated corridors for wildlife to pass is an inadequate response. Too often, these are wrongly cited, and the wildlife they're designed to support fail to read the memo or observe the change. In the case of Blackberry Farm, the greatest good for this wonderful, open-space environment is allowing nature to recreate and restore a habitat as unobtrusive as possible to the wildlife it contains, so as to maximize the benefit of this land and minimize or eliminate the driving of wildlife under stress into nearby neighborhood. I will quickly add the enormously significant issue of watershed and water resources. Water requirements for golf course operations are expensive, expensive because we pay money, expensive because we lose this resource for other applications. In contrast, restoring the natural habitat increases watershed availability, improves groundwater recharge, and reduces water pollutants from fertilizer application and pest control. Thank you very much for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you, Rose. And I see that Louise Sedati, you lowered your hand. If that was by accident, please raise it again. Our next speaker is Yukushima. Welcome, Yuko.
Hi. Good evening, council members. My name is Yukushima, a Cupertino resident. I founded a nonprofit organization, Five Oh One C Three, effective last year, November ninth, to rescue homeless people dying on the street in Cupertino. I have talked to many homeless individuals in Cupertino. Ever since I moved here, like fifteen years ago, most people need psychiatric medical care. I contacted Santa Clara County Biomedical Center. They're happy to come to see patients in Cupertino. Once a week only, during the day only. I need a space so that the patients I see on the street can be seen by doctors of Valley Medical Center, namely Dr. Anne Boe. She is very willing to come rescue the people. And I need a place. I contacted City Hall for possible locations in our vast, empty land. Open office spaces doing nothing for me to keep homeless people during the day so that they can be seen by doctors. And possibly another place where those people could stay in the night, under the roof, or if they are suffering from post-traumatic disorder and if they cannot stay housed, a space that they can peacefully and legally stay overnight camping. I need a space for those people who are ill and need to be seen by doctors. And please provide a space. And don't ask me to look for a space in the church, just because the cost to change the zoning will cost more than like, what, ten thousand dollars or about twenty thousand dollars. I need cities' power to rescue the people, make the city more humanitarian, not just because it's resting peacefully like a village of the Santa Clara, I mean, I don't talk about them, but we have to become like San Jose Mountain View and walk to do something. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Yuko. Our next speaker is Seema Linskog, followed by Tessa Parish, Lisa Warren, and Louise Sedati. Welcome, Seema.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Dear Mayor and council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Today, I wanted to talk about the Cupertino City Hall project. Cupertino is the center of innovation in the world. We have, you know, some of the most innovative countries, companies in the world here. Our city hall should reflect that. So when putting the plans together, I would urge you to consider the climate goals that we have adopted as a city. And when you're evaluating plans, to do a complete lifecycle cost analysis that takes into account the environmental impact, as well as all the other costs. Wanted to bring your attention to the new Sunnyvale City Hall that is being constructed, which they're planning to have it be a LEED Platinum-certified building. It's going to have underground parking so as to cut down the amount of asphalt space around it. It's going to have a massive solar array on its roof, which will make it one of the first net-zero energy city halls in the country. So they are really moving forward with trying to create something that is an example to city halls all around the country, and especially for Silicon Valley. And it would be great if we would consider doing something like that as well, to really live up to our climate goals and set an example for all the industry in our city. Those are all my comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Seema. Next, we have Tessa Parish, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Louise Sedati. Welcome, Tessa.
Hi, and good evening again. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. During the rainy season, I noticed some, I won't mention which schools, still had their sprinklers on, and some neighbors were still watering daily. And so I know that we are having a lot of rain, and there's efforts to reclaim the water, et cetera, but I wondered if there was willingness to add to a meeting or work to have a system to report, where the public can go on there anonymously and just go, hey, could someone go check this out? Or even send them an email through the system so it doesn't cause more staff hours to add up? So if it was a system online where it could, the person reporting it could easily get that over to the person? In other words, we need to have a system that's going to actually work if we have these rules about saving water, and some neighbors are still watering daily even through all this storm. It was just very, very noticeable during the big storm, so I just wanted to see about that. And then one other item I had noted was whether or not, and I don't know this, I don't know where to find if, the city still uses pesticides, toxic pesticides to eliminate bugs and to take care of our lawn and our, that's a big, we have pets and taking care of the environment and the water, and it going down into our water table. I just wanted to also bring that to your attention. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Louise Sedati. Welcome, Lisa.
Okay, thanks. Hi. So first off, I really wanted to be there in person this whole meeting because, and I'm so thankful that all five of the council members, and we've got two staff members, actually there in person together, because that's what I asked for, and that's what I'm hoping continues. Oh, sorry, Kristen, Kristen, I didn't, three staff members. And I couldn't get there because I was working, I couldn't leave in time, and I wanted to get to this part, but I did, I had two minutes, and I'm sure if I tried to get to City Hall from my house, two minutes, I would have met one of our fine deputies. So sorry I'm not there, but thank you all for being there. Great comments from residents on Lehigh and the effort to get them to truly shut down in every way, shape, and form, so that we can be properly reclaiming that site somehow. Blackberry Farm Golf. Bonnie Clownhouse from Audubon Society has spoken at previous meeting, you know, at first wanting a natural habitat, but realizing that golf and natural habitat could coexist, spoke to that effect, and I can't remember the date of that, it wasn't all that long ago. So I just want to repeat that. And as far as people saying quality of life in Cupertino related to the Blackberry Farm Golf Course, we need to have that option for quality of life. So again, like, two things can coexist if it's done properly, and I truly believe that that's truly, the majority of the people want that, because if you did listen to people speak at a joint meeting and another meeting, that is what the turnout was, not in written form, the people that actually spoke. City Hall. We had a subcommittee that did an excellent job in collaborating and diving deep with staff, Susan Michael, et cetera, our newly appointed assistant city manager, Morley, and came to a great conclusion of how this should be done, as to be fiscally responsible, get what we need, et cetera. And I really do not believe we should go forward with something that is going to cost any more than, let's say, thirty million. No, let's do forty, forty million, without having it go to a proper vote of resident. I don't see how a seventy million-plus project should ever be decided by the five of you on the dais. So please consider that, and I am not alone in that thinking. And one more thing, I'll sneak in. Item one from tonight's study session, when it's discussed in the future, I was, I failed to make one comment, and I'll do it now, that the public speaking portion should definitely not follow what CUSD does if it's still doing what they've done in the past. It is not functional for the public.
Thank you, Lisa. And our final speaker on Zoom is Louise Sedati. Welcome, Louise.
I see you're unmuted, so you should just be able to speak. Well, I think she's having some technical difficulties, so, Mayor, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank all the public comments. Your communication is very important to the council. I'm closing the oral communication section right now. Now, we are moving to our public hearing, and item number twenty-seven. The subject is abatement of public nuisance from weeds and other...
Oh, I apologize, Mayor.
Oh, I apologize. We do have a public comment in the, okay, we went too fast. Okay. So now we're calling public comment on the people here. Apologize for moving too fast.
So I have nine speaker cards from people in Community Hall. We'll start with Kathy Helgerson, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Jennifer Griffin. If you could approach the dais, please, I mean, the podium. Kathy, looks like Kathy has left, so Connie Cunningham.
Good evening again, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, and council members. My name is Connie Cunningham, and I've been a resident for thirty-four years. Two thousand and twenty-three is our opportunity to turn the corner on biodiversity in Cupertino. Biodiversity is critical to human life. We can change how we landscape our property, and we can add property dedicated to nature. At the last three city council meetings, I spoke about plunging biodiversity worldwide, explaining that it is critical for humans to better understand what it is, how it must be turned around, and to prioritize actions in favor of biodiversity. While talking to someone, I discovered that we each come to understanding biodiversity from different places. How did I come to that understanding? First, I fell in love with bird watching in Yosemite when I first saw a western tanager, bright red head, yellow body, black wings. That year, I bought binoculars and watched birds in earnest. That led to speaking to city council on behalf of birds with the wonderful conclusion that Cupertino approved our Bird Safe and Dark Skies ordinance. From my research for that effort, my awareness of the need for biodiversity grew. I have spoken at Sustainability Commission meetings to urge adding biodiversity and the planting of trees to Climate Action Plan two point oh. This approved plan specifically includes trees and other plants for carbon sequestration. Without the assistance of trees and plants, it is, it may not be possible for California to meet its carbon goals. Governor Newsom has signed an executive order, notice thirty by thirty, that pledges California to conserve thirty percent, excuse me, of the state's land and waters by two thousand and thirty, only seven years from today. I've been talking to a local resident who would like to change his yard but wonders how to get started. He knows that growing native plants requires new knowledge about plants, watering techniques, and soil preparation. Good news, there are native plant landscapers to help us. To jumpstart all of our imaginations, there is an in-person Growing Natives Garden Tour on April first, two thousand and twenty-three, for Cupertino and other nearby cities. It is sponsored by the California Native Plant Society, Santa Clara Valley Chapter, in association with UCC E Master Gardeners of Santa Clara County. I invite each one of you to take this tour with me, or maybe just two. I forgot about that brown acting. Of course, if you prefer to attend on your own, you may register at the website below, which I forgot to bring. Okay, there it is. I will send it on an email to you. In conclusion, what can city council do to increase biodiversity? Learn more about native plants, number one, understand biodiversity's impact on humans. Two, ask how each project supports biodiversity when it comes to council. And thirdly, approve restoring nature to sixteen acres of land, option B, at Blackberry Golf Course this year. Thank you for this time to speak.
Thank you, Connie. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Keith Kreft, followed by Jennifer Sheeran. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, city council. Hi. You know, as you all realized, we had a great deal of rain the last couple of weeks. of rain the last couple of weeks, thank heavens. But we need to make sure that our roads are maintained. There are a lot of things that have happened since we had the Atmospheric River. Santa Cruz right now is a complete disaster. There are roads that have completely fallen apart. Highway 17 was impassable most days of the last probably 14 days. And I'm very, very concerned that a lot of money is not being spent on maintaining our infrastructure. Roads are very, very important. I learned during the Atmospheric River, the 30-foot waves that hit Capitola broke three piers. They broke Seescape, I'm sorry, they broke Seacliffs Pier, they broke the Capitola Pier, and they broke the Santa Cruz Pier at the Boardwalk. There was, one afternoon, there were 30-foot waves that did this. They inundated Rio del Mar Beach. Understand that Seacliff is completely, everything was wiped out there. And I was scared several times that my mother's area was going to be, have to be evacuated. I was wrong, though, because what happened is they evacuated the low-lying areas near her, and I commend Santa Cruz County for being very, very proactive for this. And one of the reasons why they did this was they kept roads open for evacuation routes. I, I did not understand why they were doing this, but it's very important that if you have areas where you have people that are subject to creeks, rivers rising, there could be flooding, that you keep the roads open. They kept them open to Highway 1. And this is a very, very important thing to remember, that when you start building in areas such as the Santa Cruz Mountains, which are highly unstable for various reasons, earthquakes or land movement, you need to keep evacuation routes open. I learned a lot in the last 10 days by having, by following what was happening. I'm going to say KSBW Channel 8. I sure wish we got that in Santa Clara County, we used to, but they were amazing. They had so many reports of what was happening in Santa Cruz. Highway 17 has been plagued by ongoing issues with potholes. I almost hit one down by Lexington. They can't keep them filled. And I think that we need to start looking at the money that needs to be spent on infrastructure upgrades. And I am very concerned that we're going to have levees breaking in the Delta. No one spends many on levees. You're going to have more flooding. So I really am going to put a shout out for people, let's go on and fix 17. The thing is a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Keith Kreft, followed by Jennifer Sheeran, followed by Kathy Steiki. Keith, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Keith Kreft. I'm a 35-year resident of Cupertino. I live on Wilkinson behind Kennedy Junior High. I'm a golfer, and I work in the golf industry. And I'm here to talk a little bit about Blackberry Farm's golf course and why we should keep it. Some of you might know me from The Grateful Dads. I'm one of The Grateful Dads, a singing group. Anyways, so I just want to, the subject is diversity in recreation. A lot of cities' municipalities are trying to strive to do that. You've got a bocce ball court, you've got volleyball courts, you've got a swimming pool. We need to keep that golf course. I participated in that September 9 Joint Commission Zoom meeting. Went to the end, went into the wee hours, and I was happy to see that no rash decisions were made as a result of that meeting. The meeting seemed to be a little biased towards closing the course. I'm not sure why. The use analysis timeframe was changed from, I thought it went from 10 years to 25 years. They didn't say why they did that. They used pre-COVID rounds played to calculate the revenue as opposed to the current rounds played, which is higher. So it would have, the revenue numbers would have been higher. And the survey results that they presented only gave us numbers. It was like, how many people wanted this and how many people wanted that? They didn't go into any detail of why people wanted to keep the golf course, or why they wanted to convert that course to a natural habitat. In some of the comments that I know that people made in that meeting, that is that they, they said it was the best place to teach a child to golf. That golf course is the perfect place to teach somebody to golf. But it also teaches lots of other things, honesty, you know, people in, I've heard it said many times, oh, I don't golf because it takes five hours to golf around, and you're away from the family for five hours. Well, if you take a child to golf, you now have them for two hours with undivided attention, and you can teach them anything. You can teach them honesty, you can teach them social skills. It's, before I moved to Cupertino, I went to a YMCA meeting in Chicago, and they asked the question, do you know what the average time a father spends with his daughter one-on-one per week? The answer was 15 seconds. They had a program, it's now called Indian Guys. It's a father and daughter program. I spent, but the bond with my daughters is fantastic. Taking, working with the Y and taking them, I'm out of time, but I'll be back next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Sheeran, followed by Kathy Steiki, followed by Don Halsey. Welcome. I see Jennifer could not stick around. Okay, thank you. So Kathy Steiki, followed by Don Halsey, followed by Helen Wyant.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, and the rest of the city council. I am Kathy Steiki. I am a 40-year resident of Cupertino, I say proudly. And I'd like to call your attention to our golf course, which seems to be getting a lot of attention this evening, Blackberry Farm Golf Course. I have enjoyed golfing at this golf course for all of the 40 years that I have lived in Cupertino. The setting is fantastic to observe our local bird population as one golfs. Now, I'm going to report on my bird watching while I'm golfing. A few years ago, the Audubon Society placed western bluebird boxes throughout the golf course. After several years, we now see the bluebirds flying about the golf course. And when I enter the first tee, I look overhead, and there's a red-tailed hawk that I observe. The red-tailed hawks are very territorial, and it seems that this one has claimed Blackberry Farm as its territory. You can also see him soaring throughout the golf course as you continue your game. But my favorite bird out there is the blue heron. His post is at the creek along the ninth fairway. I don't really know that it's a he or a she, but he's a brave bird, so take a look for him when you're out there. He has a sunbathing rock which is situated in the creek. And as I walk up to the ninth fairway, I always walk over to the heron rock to see if he is sunbathing out there. So you can see the golfers enjoy the bird population at Blackberry Farm Golf Course also. So this, getting more to what my point of keeping the golf course is, in addition to bird watching, this golf course is especially suitable for senior golfers, me, for one, junior golfers, and family golfing. The length of the course is especially welcoming to older golfers. Yes, we have Deep Cliff Golf Course, which is too lengthy a course for junior golfers and younger family golfers who are learning to golf. I would urge you to please keep our Blackberry Farm Golf Course. Junior golfers, senior golfers, and family golfers will be grateful to you for keeping a golf course suitable to their enjoyment of this recreation. I too thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kathy. And next, we have Don Halsey. And I believe Don has a presentation with his comments. I think you might have to just connect really quick. I see, yes, we have it up.
Okay, I think we can start the timer. I'm Don Halsey. Many of you have probably seen enough of me, but I'm going to talk about Blackberry Farm and also about natural habitat today. The key thing, let's see if this, we can get rid of this. The key thing in context here, some of the things that have happened in prior meetings, so I'll touch on some of the remarks that were made, that our free and open spaces are disappearing, that it's imperative that we preserve existing natural spaces, and go one step further, and we need to create natural spaces where we can. These have been points raised to the city council, and perhaps not to the new members, but this is to give you a little education. There are many ways to do this. More recently, a prior speaker talked about the wildlife that you can see at Blackberry Farm Golf Course. No renovation needed for that. Alternatives were presented to Cupertino in the July survey. There were two consultant reports that were put together, and the one that addressed the natural habitat presented these photos to give you an idea, what do you get with option A or option B. Fine, I get it. And if we take a walk, well, if we look a little further at that, the NIH report, which was pushing for the natural habitat showed the nice wildflower meadow there, and then another area of natural habitat. But you can take a little walk and kind of see an actual habitat restoration right in progress, right along the side of the street there, okay? Going one further, you can walk around in that natural habitat restoration in progress right now, which I did, and I took some photos. And what I saw is some things that are a little disappointing. Here's a bit of tarpon that's degrading, it's under some dirt. And then here's a little, you know, cylindrical cage with some planting in there, but there's nothing there. There's, it's dead. There's not even one finger sticking up of any kind of a planting. There's a bush that's dead. Here's another one that's nothing in there. It's like moonscape. Here's nothing. This, this is so bad, it's like Charlie Brown's Christmas tree. So, to the point that it is imperative that we preserve existing wild natural spaces, why don't we start with fixing up the restorations we already have and making them a shining success? And let's leave the golf course alone. The other part of the comments I want to address is we need to go one step further and go for the natural spaces. And for that, you've got a ranch house here, and then here's the Stockelmeier Farm, and that's not really what I'd call a natural space. Let's use that. Let's convert that. You've got other spaces, you've got a park and the play area. Start with converting Stockelmeier Farm into Stockelmeier Ranch and Natural Habitat.
Thank you, Don, that is your time.
And leave the golf course alone, okay? It's not an either-or. Let's have both, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And our next speaker is Helen Wyant, followed by John Keigho, followed by Rota Frye is our final speaker. Welcome, Helen.
Good evening. My name is Helen Wyant, and I've been a resident of Cupertino since 1977. I'm here this evening to thank you for considering the conversion of Blackberry Golf Course to a natural habitat, and to express my strong support and enthusiasm for this excellent option. Why is this project so important to Cupertino? Well, I think that the following quote from an entomologist, Douglas Talamie, applies to us very well and answers the question perfectly. Quote, "We now live in a world in which plant and animal habitat is so fragmented, and those fragments are so isolated from one another that they are hemorrhaging species at an alarming rate. We need to restore nature to our home landscapes, to our corporate landscapes, to our municipal parks, and to as much of our infrastructure as we can, because our parks and preserves are just not large enough to do the job alone." Indeed, a natural habitat right in our city, in the Stevens Creek Corridor, will help reverse the loss of species, reduce water usage, eliminate chemical fertilizers, and provide a connection between isolated and natural areas. But this evening, I want to touch on the value of this project as an educational investment in our community, a model for what can be done in our home landscapes, which are today dominated by lawns which have replaced diverse native plant communities across the country on more than 40 million acres. I have observed, and our local surveys have shown, that native gardens and restoring biodiversity are of huge interest in our community. Having a native habitat adjacent to Blackberry Farm Park is a wonderful location for families and all visitors to learn about the value and the beauty of introducing native habitats in their own home landscapes. A natural landscape habitat would also be a wonderful resource for educating students. I know this because I volunteer with the nonprofit Environmental Volunteers. Teaching children to understand nature and to become good stewards of their environment may be the best investment that we can make in the future of our planet. When more people have meaningful experiences with nature, their quality of life improves, and their communities become stronger and more sustainable. By educating students about the importance of restoring habitats, we will create ambassadors who can pass on this knowledge way beyond their own community. The Natural Habitat Project has direct benefit to our ecosystem, to our community, and way beyond that. It is an amazing opportunity for Cupertino, and I urge you to implement it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Helen. Next, we have John Keigho, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, John.
Hello, and thank you. Thank you, Mayor Way and city council members for this opportunity. My name is John Keigho, and with this brief address, I hope to inform the city regarding your decision on the future of the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. Please choose option B, conversion to natural habitat. Enhancing our natural areas is essential for preserving our natural wildlife and maintaining biodiversity. The basic recipe of planting locally native plants according to best practices gives our critters the best chance of long-term success. Proper landscaping and protection are the keys. Without essential plants, we lose our wildlife. But with an expanded natural area adjacent to the Stevens Creek, we could increase the habitat to support and even boost the population of our threatened monarch butterflies and bumblebees, to name just a few. Research shows the time is running out. Let's proceed as soon as possible. Without taking assertive measures to protect and preserve our natural areas, we might bear witness to the demise and even extinction of our western monarch butterflies. The International Union for Conservation of Nature added our native monarch butterfly to its Red List of Endangered Species. Additionally, four California's bumblebee species have been recently added to the candidate list of endangered species. of endangered species per the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Further, a recent survey of all bumblebees in the state have shown that overall population abundance is in decline. By converting the golf course to a natural area, this council could put Cupertino on the map of local biodiversity hotspots. We have the local talent and resources to expand the habitat for pollinators, including bees and butterflies. We can propagate and plant native plants, including the necessary monarch butterfly host plants, milkweeds. This can be done at no cost to the city. This has been an ongoing activity at numerous areas in the county. In doing this, we could see a new era where students of all ages flock to Cupertino for volunteer opportunities and research, while all park visitors enjoy the beauty of our natural world. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, John. Our final speaker is Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Good evening again, Rhoda Frye, 40-year resident. Imagine if we were under the new rules tonight. So many of these wonderful speakers who engage in civic discourse would not be able to be talking with you. So please consider that. Just got a comment on golf. We can have our cake and eat it too. Lots of people out there golfing, even in the rain. Got a new golf store coming up in Cupertino. There is already a lot of restoration in the area. Maybe we should go after library field, baseball fields, soccer fields. That's silliness, right? So let's keep golf. Okay, but tonight, I am going to be asking you to continue your oversight of the Lehigh Permanente Quarry. I do support Supervisor Simeon's goals to shut the cement plant, terminate quarrying, and reclaim. Lehigh has proposed four new businesses, which were described at the November 17 County Hewlett Meeting. Keep in mind, if not for the limestone quarry, there would be no aggregate operations and no cement plant. But Lehigh is planning to continue the use of a newly installed aggregate plant that had been shuttered in 2011. The Air District permitted it under questionable circumstances that I've emailed council about prior. And the U.S. Department of Labor has reported excessive noise and dust. The county has remained mum on this topic. The second business is to continue cement distribution, which was supposed to be temporary in 2020. The third business, manufacture cement without the use of the kiln. That would imply potentially more rail and truck traffic for use of imported materials. Now, remember, the cement plant was built because of the local limestone, which has been exhausted. In fact, it was built to build the dam up at Mount Shasta, you know, 400-plus miles away. Anyway, the fourth business, which you've heard about already, but I'm going to repeat it so you remember it, is to convert the quarry into a for-profit landfill for 25 or more years, when in fact, the reclamation would happen to fill that quarry in only five years. We're talking about unnecessary delay of reclamation. We're also talking about a rate of 660 trucks, 66 trucks, per day for three or so years. Look, quarry needs to be filled to protect water quality and to support the overmind crumbling ridge line between the quarry and Ranger San Antonio. So reclamation is grossly overdue, as Richard and Wallace had mentioned earlier this evening. We do have an approved reclamation plan in place, established in 2012, which has allowed Lehigh to operate to the present date. That's the promise. The 2012 plan promises to use on-site materials to fill the quarry from the 200-plus-acre waste material storage area, which is mining waste. And there's even more opportunity to get materials from the hazardous landslide above Permanente Creek and also 75-acre east material storage area. Turning the quarry into a for-profit landfill is an environmentally inferior solution. Please urge the county to reclaim the land now and especially prohibit our community from being home to a for-profit landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Mayor, I really am turning it back already this time.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, for managing the oral communications. Again, the council really appreciate all the passion, time, and communication and your knowledge that you speak at oral communication. Thank you very much. Now, we're moving to public hearing, which is number 27, Abatement of Public Nuisance from Weeds or Other Fire Hazards pursuant to provisions of Cupertino Municipal Chapter 9.08 and Resolution Number 22-138, Hearing for Impacted Property Owners to Contest the Matter of Proposed Abatement. I'd like to open the public hearing. And for...
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a presentation. I will share my screen quickly. I don't know if Councilmember Chow has an announcement.
Do you want to split the item?
So given that you are on the list of properties, I do recommend that you recuse yourself?
For the entire item, or we can split the item?
Which portion of the item would you like to be present for?
I would like to hear public comments and if there are other properties impacted. I hope to still weigh in on those.
So generally, if there is a conflict, you should not participate in the deliberations. So I would recommend that you...
Oh, I thought we can split the items.
I'm trying to understand how we'd split the item.
Okay, I think your earlier recommendation in previous council meeting was we could split the item. So I was able to listen to, I think I remember there were people who were passionate about plants in their garden, and I think I was able to listen to those sections.
Okay, never mind.
Senator Mayor, let me interject a little bit, not trying to be the city attorney or the lawyer. So Councilmember Chow, your property is listed on the weed abatement program. The item before council is to adopt a resolution including your property. So I think Chris's recommendation is for you to recuse from making a decision on the item. I believe Councilmember Chow can still attend the meeting in the audience, listening in, but you cannot deliberate with the rest of the council and make a decision.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's okay.
I would be most comfortable if you... I would... That's not the right way to phrase it. I would recommend that you leave the dais, announce your reason for your recusal, and you can, of course, listen to the meeting.
Okay. So I am recusing myself because my property, I think back in 2019, for one year, I... It was... There were plants, but then I immediately cleaned it up. But then to the county, that's not satisfactory. It will be put on the list for how many years?
Three years, I believe.
Three years. So that's why it's still on the list, and even though it has been cleaned for three years. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Go ahead, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will share my screen again. So I believe you can see my screen. Okay, so whoops. What did I do here? Okay, so our Cupertino weed abatement program is in place to prevent fire hazards and other nuisances posed by vegetative growth and combustible materials. The program is managed by the Santa Clara County Department of Agriculture. Our Cupertino City Code requires property owners to remove or destroy weeds on their property for fire and public health protection. Owners are required to abate annually by April 30 and to maintain their properties throughout the year. Sorry, I'm having... So each year, the county prepares a report to the city of all properties that are listed in the program. All impacted parcels will remain on the list for three years of uninterrupted compliance. Parcels that are found to be hazard-free for those three consecutive years, according to the minimum fire safety standards, will be removed from the program. On November 15, council adopted a resolution accepting the county report and setting tonight's hearing so that the county could notify the property owners that were on the report. So owner responsibilities, according to the minimum fire safety standards, minimum safety standards are... This is a brief summary. They're mailed out to all homeowners. Vegetation height must not exceed six inches. This includes around roadways and driveways. They should clear vegetation 30 feet from any structures, also combustible debris, and around under eaves of houses, and trimmed tree branches 10 feet from the chimney, as well as clear debris from roofs and gutters. Here is a before-and-after photo of a non-compliant parcel, and afterwards, it is a compliant parcel. Here is a vacant lot, same as has been cleared after and is in compliance. So the homeowners have two options to complete the required work to abate. First is the homeowner can complete the work themselves, or the county assigns an authorized contractor to complete the work with the charges appearing on the next property tax bill. Inspections, every April 30, the county begins conducting property inspections. There is an annual inspection fee that is waived for parcels that pass their initial inspection. The annual inspection fee is charged for parcels that fail inspection. They are responsible for paying their own initial inspection. The waived fees for the passed inspection parcels are billed to the city to cover the county costs. And this is because this program is 100% cost recovery, so the county must recoup their costs for servicing the properties. On December 13, the county sent a notice of public hearing and a notice to abate. On December 13, the city sent a reminder letter to abate by April 30 and to maintain their properties year-round. Just a note on the supplemental process whereby the city covers those costs for the parcels that pass their abatement. The council adopted this process in November 2020. They passed an ongoing budget appropriation of $8,046. Any costs that exceed this budget appropriation must be approved by council, and this would happen in the July-August timeframe when we have the actual assessment of fees hearing. So and this is noted in the staff report. In 2021, which is the first year that this was implemented, the fees were $7,896. The second year, the fees were $10,465 that were covered by the city. This did require a budget appropriation, a budget modification, which council approved. And then in 2023, we won't know how many properties will pass. We assume of the 158 properties in the program that about 70% will pass their inspection. So it's amounting to about $10,200 for 111 properties. So again, this would come before council in July-August. So your recommended action before you tonight is to adopt the resolution ordering the abatement of public nuisance from weeds or other fire hazards pursuant to the resolution that was adopted on November 15, Resolution Number 22138, and to conduct the hearing for impacted property owners to conduct the matter of proposed abatement.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Do we have any residents, owners here to contest a matter of proposed abatement?
So Mayor, I have two blue speaker cards from residents in Community Hall. And let me just jump back on Zoom.
Anyone in Zoom?
We have one hand raised from Peggy Griffin.
Okay, yes, please.
Okay, Peggy, welcome. Oh, and I also failed to mention Mo Kumari, who is the weed abatement program manager. He is on hand for any questions that council has.
Thank you.
And can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, council and staff. And Mr. Kumar, I want to thank the council for setting up the procedure where if a resident is found to be non-compliant with the weeds, they can fix the problem, pay the fine the first year, and then so long as they keep it up, the city will help them subsidize the remaining two years. There are so many people who are not aware of this rule. And I know it's a fire prevention, and I appreciate that. But I also know that there are a lot of people who just are not aware of the rules. And so I really want to appreciate... This topic just drives me crazy, and I'm glad you came up with a solution that helps both the city as a whole and the individual homeowners that just didn't know the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And now, we have no further speakers on Zoom, so we will move to our public in Community Hall. First is, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Zing Lei Zhu. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I received a letter regarding to the weed abatement section commencement, and I found that my house is placed on the commencement report. Actually, again, because I was put on the list three years ago, and since then, I pay a very special pension to the lands of the grass. Actually, for the whole year, 2022, I turned off the watering system for the whole year and watched very closely about the height of the grass. I believe this notification was made, that's my guess, because there are a lot of falling leaves on my lawn, which is generated by the trees belonging to the city on my lawn and on my neighbors' driveway. I have some pictures taken here. I wonder whether I can show it? Does that work? Anyway?
Yes, that worked.
Oh, it worked? Okay, great. When I get this list... I immediately take a picture here. You can see that there are a lot of leaves. During the fall season, there is a huge amount of leaves falling from these two trees.
You could just rotate your picture.
Oh, rotate? Okay, yeah. Oh, sorry.
Other way. Perfect.
Yeah, after a simple cleaning of the leaves, you can see that I got some picture looks like this way, even without cutting them. And if you take a closer look, you can see there are a lot of black areas here. They are all soils. Because I didn't water them, this grass field is quite bold, actually. There are a lot of bare soil exposing to the air. And even after that, I make a cut with my mower, but it does not cut much grass because you're almost under the limit of the grass mower can work. And I measure some grass is certainly below the six-inch limitation. Yeah, I would say that... Yeah, therefore, with these supporting documents, I would like to make a appeal for the decision because I did really make a very careful care of the grass during the whole year. And in the report, I didn't see any very detailed reason why it's a violation of the rule. Yeah, so that's why I would like to make a appeal and request for reconsideration of putting my home 18850 Tagle Avenue on the list. I understand the importance of the weed abation, and I tried my best to obey the rules. Thank you very much for your time and reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Fan Kong. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, City Council. My house has been listed in this abate program for more than three years. And this year, it showed up more than sports time, I believe. So I called them because over the past three years, I've been cleaning up the weeds all the time to make sure my property is... the time to make sure my property is following the rules. And this year it show up in the list again. So I caught the, actually, I called the Santa Clara Division, and then they told me that they say my property should have been removed. So according to them, my property shouldn't be there, but it still show up in the list. So I'm just wondering if there's a mistake somewhere.
I believe Mayor Mo can probably answer that. Can look up the parcel.
Yeah, this is a this is Mo Kumari with Santa Clara County. Can I get the parcel number?
Yeah, sure. The parcel number is three-seven-five-zero-seven-zero-two-nine.
Three-seven-five-zero-seven?
Zero-two-nine.
Zero-two-nine.
Laurie Avenue.
Laurie Avenue.
Your property has already been removed.
Okay, thank you. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mayor?
So my question is, what do we the first request? I am a little confused on that.
So perhaps a representative from the county can speak to the speak to the property?
If Zing Lu, Zing Lei, would you, what is that, your parcel address or your APN number?
My parcel number is three-seven-five-three-two-zero-two-six. Two-six.
Two-six. You have a good memory.
The the property at three-seven-five-three-two-zero-two-six failed the compliance inspection in twenty twenty, so it would still have one more year of compliance before it's dropped from the program.
I hope one more year. Yeah, could could you please let me know which part I violated the rule because I do believe I follow them, keep the grasslands below six inch?
For the last two years, the property has been compliant, but one year before that it was not. So there's one more year to go.
Oh, okay, only one more year. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think both cases have been resolved. And so, City Attorney, I have a question. Do we close the public comment first and make public deliberate, or do we do a deliberation before we close the public hearing?
So if if there is is no more evidence to be presented, you may close the public hearing and begin deliberating.
Okay, so since there are no more public property owners here, we're going to close the public hearing and come back to council deliberation. Do we have any council members would like to make some comments?
Well, I I'm really glad to see that this has gone through so quickly this time and that we did have a resolution on at least one of the items. I'm actually hoping that we can move the recommended action now and move on.
Would you like to make a motion, please?
I move the recommended action.
May I have a second?
Can I get one point of clarification first?
Absolutely.
Do we need to amend it to include that this one specific APN has been struck from the list? Mr. City Attorney?
Is I I'm just trying to check and see if the APN is is on the list in the agenda packet.
Through the mayor, it is on in Exhibit A. So that that's a good point.
So yeah, so so yes, then that I would recommend striking that property from the list.
Okay, so move the recommended action with that particular property and I didn't mark down the APN, but to have that struck from the list.
And then to piggyback on that, do we need to make any specific findings of fact that are reflected in the in the motion?
No, I don't I don't believe so.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. May I have a second, please?
I will second.
It's being moved and seconded. Any further discussions?
I will just note what the APN number was. I have three-seven-five-zero-seven-zero-two-nine.
Okay, we're gonna, do we need to amend it to add that into our motion?
I I as long as the clerk is clear on what's being moved, I don't think there's any issue.
Okay, so seeing no discussions, let's vote by light.
And, okay. And the motion carries with Councilmember Chow absent, recused.
All right, thank you, council members. And I'd like to welcome Councilmember Chow back to the dials, please. Okay, before Councilmember Chow's coming, let's move the items to item twenty-eight. Consider approving amendments to elected officials' compensation program. May I have a presentation, please?
Sure, Director Alfaro is here to make a presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, Miss Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Wei, City Councilmembers. President Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services, before you this evening with a brief oral report on the agenda item number twenty-eight. City staff is bringing an update to the elected officials' compensation program to revise two areas of the program. One, to change the city council technology policy from a stipend program to a city-provided equipment. Secondly, that we are removing the health and leave provision to bring the program in line with state law and available should there be any questions.
Thank you. Council questions, please. Councilmember Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wei. I was wondering if if perhaps this could be done offline, that we could have a memo to the council members, which would let us know what the total amounts of that compensation with regards to the healthcare reimbursement, if you had healthcare from another source. I believe it was three hundred and seventy-five dollars per month that would be provided. I would like to know which which council members, you don't have to put their names, but which council members, the years, did they receive those payments? And where is there a record that they, I believe they needed to reimburse the city for those amounts? I'd like to know about that. I had heard that there was a council member who requested this, and and it was denied. So I would like to ensure that all of the money was reimbursed to the city. Thank you.
Any other council member comment? Yes. Nope, seeing none, I'd like to open it to public comment, please. Zoom hands raised or blue cards here? Madam City Clerk?
Sorry, my list fell off. We have no one on Zoom, Mayor, and I have no speaker cards.
Seeing we have no public cards or Zoom hands raised, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council for discussion. Do we have any hands raised from council for discussions? Councilmember Moore, your request, is it part of the information only, or what are you gonna incorporate into it?
It's it's an informational request that I'm hoping to have that information gathered and brought to to the council in the form of a memo.
Madam City?
Sure, through to Mayor. So we could certainly do that as an email format, provide it all to the city, all of the council members.
Thank you. Seeing none, if we have any further discussions, let's make a motion and second. May I have a motion, please? So Vice Mayor Mohan moved as recommended action, and I'll second that. And let's have a voting by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And let's go to, coming back to the regular meeting, where we left off is reports by council and staff, number seven point two, number seven, number two, actually. So council members, please make a brief report of your activities since last meeting. This doesn't include your committee assignment, just a brief report on your activities. Do we have council members want to volunteer first? Council, Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
Last week, I attended the Chamber of Commerce installation of the new president and board members. I also attended the Cupertino Library Foundation get together where they announced their activities for the next year. And I attended a West Valley Community Services event, which celebrated the leadership of their outgoing Executive Director, Josh Sello.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan. You've been really busy. Seeing Councilmember Fruen?
Sure, I I attended the same events that the Vice Mayor did. I will thank both the Chamber and West Valley for scheduling these events, both at Quinlan, so that it was possible for everybody to shuffle back and forth and attend both of them, since they were scheduled at the exact same time. And in addition, on January the third, alongside the the mayor, I attended the council reorganization and swearing in of the new Sunnyvale City Council. One of their members was sworn in pursuant to a tie that was broken by drawing a name out of a hat. So don't let anyone ever think that your vote doesn't matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fruen. And Councilmember Moore or Councilmember Chow, do you have any report to do?
Okay, so I also attended the Chamber of Commerce Board installation last week and well, and I went up to Palo Alto and attended their reorganization, and they now have Mayor Lydia Koo there. And kind of a different report, I drove back from Memphis, Tennessee, a little over a week ago, having gotten to visit the National Civil Rights Museum at the Lorraine Motel, which walks visitors from slavery through the civil rights movement, including, and it was it was really kind of an emotionally tough experience. You go through the assassination of Martin Luther King Junior, because that occurred at the motel. And they preserved the motel rooms there, and then you walk across the street where the assassin was, and they have, the archives are held there. So they have actual material from from that event at this museum. It's it's really, I encourage everyone to go there, it's really moving. And I attended, oh, and wanted to also add that I'm continuing my environmental studies, and I'm studying California climate change right now, and I'm just started it, and I'm really excited. We're looking at the water in the state and the water law again, which is pretty complicated, interesting stuff. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And so, Councilmember Chow? So I'd like to make a brief report. I have attended, and I think a couple of council members too, a couple, a few swearing ceremonies in our neighboring cities, Sunnyvale, Saratoga, and also Cupertino Union School District swearing. I believe it's important to make connections with our neighboring facility government, and so that we can support each other and move forward together. And also, I think a couple of council members also went to the Reef Across America at at Gate of Heaven in in paying memory and respect to our veterans who passed in protecting our country and our freedom. So that was always a very moving event every year. And a few of us also went to the PGA Tour Superstore Ribbon Cutting. We welcomed that store to bring really another retail store for us, and it was very, very well-attended that day. A lot of people are there shopping. And I'd like to make a brief announcement. I am hosting a morning coffee with Mayor every first Tuesday morning at seven-thirty to eight-thirty in our very new holders' country inn who burned down in San Jose, now they moved to Cupertino. It's one of my favorite places, so now I can eat there and pay tax to Cupertino. So do come to Mayor's Coffee, seven-thirty to eight-thirty, the first Tuesday of the morning, coffee and tea on the mayor, but if you want to buy food, you have to pay for yourself. So that's my brief announcement. Thank you. Moving to number three, report on committee assignments. Do we have any council members have a committee assignment? Yes, Vice Mayor Mohan?
I attended last week the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors meeting. The good news for all for all of us, residents of Cupertino, is that the average residential clean energy customer will see a three-dollar decline on their electricity bills relative to PG&E rates. So we rarely see anything going down in cost. This is one of those rare exceptions.
Any anyone else? So I want to add to that, I being an alternate for Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and I'm listening to every meeting, so I listened to that meeting too. And I think Silicon, Silicon Valley Green Energy is doing a great job for our region. So thank you for Vice Mayor Mohan to serve on that very important agency. So now we move to number four, report on subcommittee assignments. Do we have council members have any subcommittee assignments activities? Nope, seeing that it's a holiday season. So now we're moving to number five, City Manager update.
Thank you, Mayor Wei. Really quickly, wishing everyone a Happy New Year. This is our first meeting in the year as a new council. I don't have a whole lot of update, I just want to give the public work staff a shout out for the city to stay safe, to stay out of trouble. And really, the public work staff has work above and beyond to keep our streets on storm out of trouble. So if you look around, most of the cities have declared emergencies. We're lucky enough, we're not lucky enough. We really have dedicated diligent staff who is staying on top of their work to make sure that our residents are enjoying and benefiting from this. I heard from the news, nine Pine Apple Express atmosphere reversed since beginning of December. So other than that, I just want to make sure Public Works Director and also Assistant City Manager, the prior Public Work Staff, deliver my sincere, most sincere gratitude towards our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Wu. That was really good news because I do appreciate our city being safe, our staff really worked diligently, they did prevention work and also twenty-four-seven on call. So yes, thank you for the staff. Now we're moving to consent agenda. We have items six to twenty-six. I'm asking council members or publicly who would like to pull consent agenda before we approve the rest of it. Do we have council members who would like to pull consent agenda? Councilmember Chow?
So I'd like to pull the item on black, the swimming pool reconditioning.
What number is that?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay. And I know we have advanced email to pull consent agenda from council members. Twenty, I believe, from from Councilmember Fruen?
That is correct.
Okay. And Councilmember Moore?
Okay, I would like to pull eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-six. I'll mention why, but twenty-six looked like it was looking for some council input.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty-six. Okay, any other council members? Okay, the public?
Mayor, we have a count, a member of the public that wishes to pull ten, thirteen, and eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-six, which are already mentioned by Councilmember Moore. So ten and thirteen.
Okay, so I have record on pulling number ten, number thirteen, number eighteen, number nineteen, twenty, twenty-six, and twenty-three and twenty-six. So may I have a motion to approve the rest of it? Six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, twenty-one, twenty-two.
I will so move.
May I have a second, please?
Second?
It's me move and second it. Any further discussions? Seeing none, let's go for a voting by light.
Sorry, Mayor, you did mention item twenty-five, right?
I'm sorry?
You did mention twenty-five as well?
Oh, at, yes, at twenty-five. Who?
Twenty-four as well?
I think I, I think I just said twenty-four. I didn't?
Okay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, so we are moving to number ten. Do we have a staff report for number ten? Do we have a stat report for number ten?
Through the Mayor, we do not have a staff report, but Director Alfaro is here for any questions from the members of public who wish to discuss this item. Do we have any? Kirsten, do we know which member of the public pull and what would like to be discussed?
Yes, Madam City Manager, it was Peggy Griffin.
So Peggy, would you like to ask the question, please?
So I do see two people with their hands raised, so I'll call on Peggy.
Okay.
Peggy?
Yes, I pulled this item because the council had finally gotten to a point where accounts payable was being presented on a regular basis every month. And now we're back at a point where the accounts payable for October 2022 is two and a half months late. And I want to know why and also will you, is the plan to regularly get, to get back to presenting the accounts payable regularly once a month? Thank you.
May I have an answer from maybe Director Alfaro?
Thank you, Mayor Way. I'd love to answer that question. So we did take the October accounts payable to the Audit Committee in late November. So we did miss the reporting to City Council in the December, the second December meeting to meet our reporting guidelines to get items on the agenda. And so that's why that one is late. You will note that this evening, we actually have put the December AP on this evening as well as November AP. And that's to help us get back on track because we will be meeting with Audit next Monday, but they had yet to see those AP reports. But we are trying to work to get reporting back online and not while you're going to see it. So from this day, from this month forward, our goal is to bring them in back onto a monthly basis.
Thank you, Director Alfaro. Are there any further questions from the public or council? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Way. I had a couple of questions which I can take offline. Trying to get some information about these items. So one was, and I can give the PDF numbers and I'll just go through this quickly and I'll provide an email offline and to get that information to the rest of council, if that will work. PDF 131, what is the retreat center mentioned? Next, PDF 133, there is a payment for Sonatral Pacific West Security and I'm wondering about the contract for that. PDF 140, there were two vented electric dryers purchased. I was wondering where those happened to be. And further questions, which I wanted to just provide this during a kind of the high level consent item, but I'll just keep going on the same topic. The IMPAC, IMPEC contract, ninety thousand per month. It's a janitorial service contract. I wanted to know, that shows up on PDF 153. I wanted to know when that last came to council. Via shuttle, I would like to know the ridership numbers. We paid about sixty-nine thousand dollars for the month. And that'll do it. So I would like to, if it's all right with the City Manager, I'd like to just compile this, provide it for staff and do it that way. Okay.
That's fine. Thank you.
So this is just for City Managers to respond to Councilmember Moore's request, right?
And Councilmember Moore requests us all the council members to get the same information, so we'll send it to all council.
All right, thank you. So any further discussions? If not, I'd like to have a motion and second to pass this item, please.
Do we have any further public comment on this item?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, City Attorney Jensen. We have Lisa Warren. And Lisa, welcome.
No, I think my hand was up because I missed the last time. I have no comment. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment period. And then back to the council discussions. Any more discussions? If not, I'd like to see a motion, please. So Councilmember Moore?
I move the recommended action.
Second?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Frun seconded. If no more discussions, let's vote by light.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Kirsten. And then we are going to do number thirteen. Consider the monthly treasures report for October 2022. And do we know who pulled this item?
Mayor, that was Peggy Griffin as well.
Okay, so shall we open the public comment for this or just ask her to state the questions?
So we don't have any procedures around how to do this, so it's really at the discretion of the Chair.
Okay, so I will let Peggy speak up because she pulled the questions.
Okay, welcome Peggy.
Good evening and thank you, Council, City Council and staff. Kirsten, could you display the slide I sent you?
What time did you send that? Yeah, what time did you send that, Peggy? Oh, you just, you just sent it, okay.
Oh, well, about a minute or so ago. Do you see it?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
It's one page and it's the first page of the treasures report. And I have a couple of questions. The first is, the city treasurer shall file a copy with the legislative body. Up until now, the City Council and the Audit Committee had gotten so that there was kind of a rhythm going and the accounts payable and treasures report and the investment report were being presented to the City Council on a regular basis. And now there's this mixture and it doesn't look like it's going to happen. And so in the treasures report right now, the very first part, under Government Code 41004, it says the city treasurer shall file a copy with the legislative body. Well, that is the City Council. And I want to know, as a member of the public, if you file it with the council, where does it go and how does the public see it on a monthly basis? That's my first question. Should I ask all my questions first?
It's, how many questions do you have, Peggy?
I have three. I have three.
Okay, so maybe we can have you all three questions and then have our, yeah.
Okay, so Kirsten, could you scroll down a little bit, please? Okay, the second question. It says, it says that staff have previously included accounts payable with the treasures reports following recommendation by the subcommittee and approval by council. But all of a sudden, it changed. I want to know, the previous council approved this procedure and all of a sudden, it's changing. When did the council change this decision to stop doing this? That's my second question. And my third question is, if you go down to the bottom of the report, it says, Audit Committee will review the accounts payable reports for November and December at their January meeting. When will they review the treasures report or will they? Those are my three questions and they're on this one page. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peggy. So may I have staff answer the question of Director Alfaro, Yan? Thank you, Director Alfaro.
Not a problem. Thank you. See now Alfaro, again, Director of Administrative Services. Mayor Way, council members, more than happy to answer these questions. The first is a similar answer to the accounts payable reports. We got a little backed up there, having that Audit Committee late in November and just having really about the one opportunity or so to present for December and then having the January meeting canceled, until we're bringing everything as soon as possible here. Going forward, we will be caught up. In terms of the second question, the intent is not to stop taking these reports to Audit Committee. This is simply a timing issue. We did email to Audit Committee and the council members on December 21st, the October and November treasures reports to stay compliant with Government Code Section 41004. And at the January 23rd, this coming Monday's meeting for Audit Committee, they will be reviewing the November and December treasures reports, both investment, non-investment. Along with the non-investment treasures reports will also include the accounts payable for November and December. And I think, that was the second question. Oh, and I believe I answered the third, which is will they be looking at the treasures reports at the state meeting? And that is yes, they will be looking at both November and December treasures reports at that meeting as well.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Do we have any more questions?
Mayor, Lisa Warren's hand is raised again. I can call on her?
Yes, please.
Lisa, welcome.
Hi, this time it's real. So I'm just, I would like to request, and I hope it's taken as a good idea, that since we have new committee members for the Audit Committee and there's been this lapse of some stuff that, and this commitment from Director Alfaro to get back on track, which was something that Cupertino was applauded for doing because they were meeting the requirements that they hadn't been meeting before, as I understand it. And that was a long road to get there. And holidays and a switch of people and whatever may be a good reason, but I just want that commitment to be very serious and to also be made serious to anyone and everyone who is on that Audit Committee, especially since we've changed people who were very familiar with what, how we got where we are now. So that's just hopefully not an inappropriate request. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor, that is all.
Okay, thank you. So I will close the public comment and come back to the council. Do council members have any discussions? Councilmember Moore?
Yes, I just wanted to provide a little more information about this item. So I had previously chaired the Audit Committee and I was on it for the past two years. There had been a meeting scheduled for December 19th. I did not cancel that meeting. It was canceled by staff. That meeting could have gone over those, those, those reports. Now I'm looking at the email that we got on December 21st and it does have the monthly treasures reports, but those are supposed to include the receipts and dispersments and the fund balances. So one of the things that we had previously discussed was about having the accounts payable statements. And there was, there was a request from staff that they not be within the report, but they, because we need to report on the, have the receipts, dispersments, and fund balances brought to the legislative body, that you, the accounts payable would, our request was that they would go at least travel along with these reports. And our original subcommittee, which was myself and Mayor Paul, former Mayor Paul, that we had, we had a subcommittee, we had some discussions about these reports and wanted to have the accounts payable within the, within that treasures report that it made more sense. And it also, for an agenda item, it makes it more concise in your packet and then to have all that information within it. Now, there was an earlier comment about, you know, where can we find these reports? Well, other cities put them on their websites and you can see a monthly report link for each month. And that was something that we thought would be a good idea for, for our city to do. So we were trying to make it, make it more concise so that we wouldn't have these long accounts payable statements in our agenda, shorten up the agenda pages. So we're going to, you know, save, save on the length of the document. And so I'm hoping that it goes, goes, heads in that direction to, to make it more concise for the, for the public. And then that they, they've got a very clear landing page on our, on our website so that they can get this information. Okay, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you for your comment. And any more comment from the council or any more comments from the Director Alfaro? If not, thank you, Councilmore, for your advice. I'm pretty sure the new representatives will follow that and then really do a good job. And so if not, this is to receive the report. I don't think we need a motion or second to do it?
There is, there is no requirement for council to take action. That's correct.
Thank you. If no further comment, let's move on to number eighteen, which is consider amending the 2023 Council Committee Assignment to designate a council appointment to the Historic Society Advisory Council. May I know who pulled this? Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Okay, so I pulled this item and I'm thinking that I might want to withdraw my name since we already have a City Council member on the board of the Historical Society. And perhaps, I believe it's Councilmember Frun, and I'm thinking it might make more sense and be more streamlined since he's already on the board if he would be serving on the Advisory Council. That makes more sense to me. I also concerned about the, kind of the redundancy of the council members. And if perhaps we are, I don't know if there's a Brown Act violation potentially, but we would have three council members now involved with the Historical Society. What's interesting about this particular item is that I believe originally, Councilmember Chow was asking to see if we could have a board member on the Historical Society. And to my vague recollection, we were saying, no, we can't require the Historical Society to have a board member there. So that was, to my recollection, that was the original ask. And now we've got this separate committee and we have what we wanted for, to begin with, which was a member on the board. So I respectfully request that I am removed from this assignment.
Thank you for your consideration. I think that's very good points to make. So may I make a suggestion to Councilmember Frun? Are you willing to maybe resign from your official board position and take the advisory board representing the City Council? Because we, agreement between the City Council and Historic Society is to have one council member on the advisory board who is not a voting member. Would you be willing to make that switch?
Yes.
Okay, so, so, well, since that's a quick yes, so I will make a no, do we have a staff report on it? Oh, let's have a staff report and then open public comment, please. We don't have a staff report, right?
I have a brief summary of a staff report.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. On December 20, 2022, council approved the appointments of the 2023 Council Member Committee Assignments. And the amendment is necessary to designate a council representatives to the Historical Society Advisory Council. The amended 2023 Council Committee Assignments under Attachment A designates Councilmember Moore as the primary and Councilmember Chow as the alternate to the Advisory Council. The staff recommendation would be to approve the amendment to the 2023 Council Committee Assignments.
Okay, so one point of clarification is I think when we were making the assignment, I overlooked, we overlooked this assignment. So we're putting on the agenda right now. So let's, if there's no questions from council, let's open up a public comment.
Yes.
Do we have a question? A question or comment or discussion? Okay, so we'll let Councilmember Chow make the question first.
So it's probably moot point, but I'm just curious. If Councilmember Frun did not resign, but the city is providing funding to Historical Society, would that create a conflict of interest? Just curious.
So generally uncompensated service on a nonprofit board does not, does not create a conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act? So the answer would generally be no?
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good to know, but I remember the 2018 Code of Ethics, which we didn't approve, would make that a conflict of interest?
So, yeah, so the council has, is free to adopt rules that are stricter than state law requirements for conflicts of interest. But I don't believe that this would be prohibited either by state law or the city's current ethics policy.
So even though the, what the city is funding the organization?
That's correct, because there's, there is not a financial interest under the, under the Political Reform Act and FPPC regulations.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Let's open public comment.
So first we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Kathy Steiki. We have no one on Zoom, Mayor. We have no one on Zoom, Mayor.
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, this is very important. I am firmly committed to having the Stockle Meyer House be restored. I think it's absolutely adamant. I just found out that the Scott House in Scotts Valley is actually from 1855. I had no idea. We're right now working on trying to get the Graves House restored and moved to Kelly Park in San Jose, because I'm a member of San Jose PAC, which is the Historical Society for San Jose. I am very, very concerned that the farming history of Cupertino is being lost. I have members of my family that were involved in the French Plum and Prune Orchards in Willow Glen and Campbell 100 years ago. And Cupertino has a very, very long history of farming and orchard. And I think it's important for our children to understand this. Cupertino came from rural roots, and it, yes, it's now high tech, but we need to teach the children the history of this area. When you have history, you learn what people were going through at that time. No one understands that there were farms here. And I think, I am committed to having Stockle Meyer House be moved on. This is probably the ninth year that, that the city count, that nothing has happened with it. I understand that Palo Alto has a new history museum. I was reading about it today. They got grants, federal grants, and they got county grants to have a Palo Alto museum. And it is going to have, I think, different exhibits on different types of history in, in Palo Alto. I want that for Cupertino. I want there to be something similar to Los Altos, like the History House and the Doctor's House. Why can't we have that? We have a lot of, a lot of money rolling around in these high-tech companies. Why can't someone step up and donate money? Other cities, Hewlett and Packard did that. We have not had anyone do that from these tech companies in Cupertino, nothing. I am challenging Apple to do that. Apple has saved the Glendening Barn, which is on their property. And I, I'm challenging some of our talk the talk, walk the walk. If you have the money, put it into something important like preservation of our history. San Jose is doing it, and they have taken things to Kelly Park from all over their city that represent all sorts of history. But why can't Cupertino? We are notorious for tearing down every old house in this city. Look at the Snyder Hammond House sitting out there. Nothing has happened with it. I think it's important that we have guidance from our city council, helping the Historical Society and whoever else to try to get these precious structures
Thank you, Jennifer.
To teach history. Thank you.
Next, we have Kathy Steiki. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you. Mayor Way, or Sheila Mohan, should I say, and the rest of city council. I'm a little bit perplexed about what's going on, so you'll have to excuse my ignorance. I did not know that our city council actually were involved in joining advisory boards of our independent groups throughout the city. Now, there are cities who support Historical Societies. They actually fund them, and I can understand that involvement. But I'm wondering, is this a precedent that we're setting? Will you be going into all of the nonprofits in Cupertino and, and putting an advisory person from the city council into that? You know, I'm, I personally don't want, I belong to the Cupertino Historical Society. I don't want any of my business or comments or anything that I say to the Cupertino Historical Society to be aired by the city council as such. I don't mind if they attend and listen, but it sounds to me like, I don't know, I'm, I'm concerned, and I would like to know what the protocol is on this.
So may I have someone, a staff, explain the MOU with, between the city and the Historic Society because of the annual funding with the budget in the parking
But there are grants given to many of the nonprofits in our community. That's my reason for questioning.
Maybe city manager can, or?
So Kirsten, do we have any agreement that's available to provide to Kathy on what the council's function is on this advisory board?
So can we email you the information, Kathy?
Yes, fine, but if you move forward, then it says to me that our city council may possibly be, send an advisory person to every nonprofit. That concerns me. Thank you.
Maybe I can answer it, or you want to answer it?
I, I can look into it and forward.
So if I, if I understand it correctly, because of the MOU between the city and the Historic Society for annual budget item within the parking regulation department, so it's not a community grant, it's an annual budget, that's why the MOU between the city council and Historic Society is to have one city council member sitting on the advisory board with no voting right to sort of working with the Historic Society with the funding that ongoing. So that's what my understanding is. So, but we'll send you the whole information so that is correctly spelled out. But that's my recollection of, because I remember vividly the, the meetings and how we discuss it, how we're gonna continue to fund Historic Society without the annual public, committee grant application. It's going to be a budget item in the city. And Councilmember Frueen, you know that better, too?
If, if I may, you know, from internally having reviewed the MOU on behalf of the Historical Society, I think that's an accurate description of, of what is happening there. You know, with respect to whether this would happen with other organizations, I, I don't know that we've expressed anything on that topic.
Thank you, Kathy. We will have staff send you the information. Councilmember Moore?
I have a, a comment about something mentioned with regards to the, the Stockle Meyer House, so it's a little bit off topic for this item. It is coming back. It is on our work plan, so we are going to see it. With regards to the MOU being reviewed by Councilmember Frueen as a board member for the Historical Society, I would assume that a board member, would they would have had a vote on, on this MOU? And did Councilmember Frueen, I'm just curious if you participated in that vote? Because it's a little strange how this agenda item actually is, because we, if I am understanding correctly, we have a, a council member who reviewed the memo of understanding between the city and the council before he was elected, is still, as of today, right now, a, a board member of the Historical Society, and we were going to be assigning a council member to the advisory committee with an alternate, Councilmember Chow. So I'd like to know the answer about that and also just, just have that all read into the record. And I, I agree with the concern from the member of the public about this.
Councilmember Frueen, would you like to say something?
So yes, my, my recollection is that I did vote on it. My plan had always been to step down to the internal advisory board within a month anyway. So I, I don't really see any particular problem here. As far as this item is concerned, this is a different creature. The, the advisory council is not an internal creature to the, the Historical Society. It is a creature of our memorandum of understanding. It is a slightly different entity.
Okay, so.
Pardon?
Councilmember Moore?
Yes, through, through the mayor. So let me understand, your plan was to step down to the advisory council as a member of the Historical Society?
There is, pursuant to the Historical Society's bylaws, there is an organization that is its advisory board, which is a different entity from the advisory council.
Okay, so you wanted to, through the mayor, to be on the advisory board while there was an advisory council? I think we're kind of getting into some sort of an unusual standing committee, perhaps, because this would be long-term. So I'm, I'm wondering, from a Brown Act standpoint, how that could have functioned?
Regardless, we're now in a situation where I would be the same person in both capacities, so there's no issue.
Through the mayor, that, that is because you are, at this moment, a board member, and I'm stepping aside based on that.
I am not getting the question. Is the question for our city manager, uh, city attorney, or?
So, yeah, so I, I don't think there's a conflict of, there's, there's any kind of conflict of interest either under the Political Reform Act or Section 1090, given the fact pattern presented. So it, you know, so it, it is just a, a, there, there is a dual role there. I don't see it as being a conflict of interest under the law.
Pardon, through the mayor, I'm not saying that it's a conflict of interest. I'm saying that I think it's a standing committee if you have two of us there.
Well, if you, if you, but if, if only two members participate, it's, it's not, not necessarily a Brown Act body.
Okay, so.
I think this is highly irregular.
Okay, so, Councilmember Chow?
So I think it was originally my idea to include this requirement of a board member, I mean, a council member sitting on the board, because I looked at Saratoga, they have two council members sitting on the board of HighCON Garden. And in Palo Alto, they have council members sitting on like three different nonprofit boards. So that, there are precedents for that. And initially, it was, we want to show the city's committee to supporting Historical Society, but allocating taxpayer dollars annually a fixed amount, we need some oversight for this, this allocation. Therefore, we want to have some visibility for the public, and so there's the idea of having a council member sitting on the board. But I didn't know there are two different board, advisory council is not a board? That's an information I didn't know before. I understand the assignment was a board member that's a non-voting member, but it's a board member. But turns out this is advisory, a member of the advisory council, but not a board. Then I am curious how much this transparency and accountability we would be able to get from this role. But it's the first MOU. I think we are trying this out. We can always try to see how this work. Yeah, so I'm happy to see this going forward. And I think it's, I think it's two members, but not a city committee, so it's not a standing committee. It's of an outside organization. As long as there is not a quarrel, I don't think there is any legal issue. Yeah.
Thank you for your input, Council, City Attorney Jensen, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, there, there are some limited circumstances where a private board could be subject to the Brown Act. I, I don't believe those apply here, but I will confirm that.
Thank you. Any more discussion from the city council?
Just a question. So we're being told that Councilmember Frueen is going to step down from the board, but, you know, how are you going to put that in the motion? Now, I don't, I don't quite understand how we have the authority to even do that, because we, we don't have any control over who is on the board of the Historical Society. And I guess this is a question for the city attorney about making a motion that would include someone stepping down from their board position of another organization.
I, I believe the, the board would be, excuse me, excuse, the council would be, be voting on the motion based on, on, on Councilmember Frueen's representation.
So let me try to make a motion, see if that fits. So I move to approve the amendment to the 2023 city committee assignment to designate Councilmember Frueen as the primary and Councilmember Chow as the alternate to the Historic Society Advisory Council pending Councilmember Frueen's resignation from the Historic Society Board. If that's acceptable, acceptable, may I have a mo, a second, please?
Our second.
So we have a motion and second. Any further discussions from council? Councilmember Frueen? No? Okay, may I have a light vote, please? Well, I think we're missing, I'm missing a vote.
Motion carries with more abstaining.
All right, thank you. So let's move to number 19. Consider approval of response to the 2022 Civil Grand Jury of Santa Clara County report entitled, "Show Me the Money: Financial Transparency Needed." Do we have, do we know who pulled this item? May I have that person ask the questions?
Yes, Mayor, that was, well, it was Councilmember Moore as well as Peggy Griffin.
All right, who would like to speak first? Peggy?
I don't, actually, she's not on Zoom, but their hand raised.
So maybe Councilmore.
There we go, yeah. Hello, Peggy.
This was just a comment. I would like to thank both Councilmember Moore and the previous council for insisting that the city come into compliance with this law requiring a monthly treasurer's report. It was a long, uh, series of meetings and discussions. Had it not been for Councilmember Moore's due diligence, Cupertino would be another city out of compliance. It appears to me that instead of including these reports in a monthly basis, and, and I have to, I have to qualify this, let me take this back. I want to thank Director Alfaro for clarifying that these reports will, they will catch up and they will produce them monthly so that the public and the council will have access to them. But I do want to draw the attention to Councilmembers' more efforts to get the city in compliance. Thank you.
No, Mayor, we have no cards and no further attendee. Oh, Lisa Warren actually raised her hand. If you'd like me to call on Lisa Warren?
Yes, please.
Lisa, welcome.
Hi, quickly, what Peggy just said about appreciating Kitty's efforts and Director Alfaro's efforts as well to, to make that happen. And I just want to add that it's really disappointing that there is a big swath of our community who knows that to be true, but chooses to, or should know that to be true, if they're really reading things and following things, but insist on bashing Councilmember Moore. And I, I wouldn't have said this publicly, but this opportunity is here and I'm taking it. It's just really disheartening and sickening what has happened when someone has done something good and valuable and necessary and gets no large recognition for that. So, thank you, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Lisa. And Mayor, that is all for.
Okay, so actually, let me close the public comment first and come back to council discussion. Go ahead, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate the, the comments from the members of the public. I appreciate that the letter of response indicates that the changes the city made were in response to input from the audit committee. I had read the municipal code, and I asked that we have the monthly reports, which the municipal code was indicating along the state law. I was told by a staff member that the neighboring cities do not do this, provide that reporting.
Peggy, you said else?
Someone's unmuted. Okay, okay. I was later told that it was a new requirement from 2018, and having been on the Legislative Review Committee, I could look up the legislative and having been on the Legislative Review Committee, I could look up the legislative history. The requirement is actually from 1949, predating the incorporation of our city. I researched the Solano Grand Jury Report, which was referenced by the local grand jury. And I specifically requested, so this was going on in 2021, I specifically requested Mayor Paul to return to the Audit Committee for 2022 in order to assist me, which is why the compliance began early 2022. This was very helpful due to his institutional knowledge. We were the subcommittee to work out the format of these reports to council, and it's very important to maintain a regular schedule with regards to these reports. For instance, council would previously see accounts payable statements up to six months after the fact. And council had not been given a complete listing of the city's accounts even at that time. And it took a little while, but we finally got the complete listing. We appear to have already fallen a bit out of compliance at this point, but I am glad to see that it is being fixed and that moving ahead, we will see these reports. And as I had asked, mentioned previously, that we would want to have these reports, the monthly reports, show up on the website so that people can see them, which other cities do. I think that would be really valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Any more comment? Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Councilmember Moore for her insistence on pulling some of these consent agenda items. At first, I didn't understand. I don't go into that much details. But I thought we should support this effort, and then we went along. But turns out it's worthwhile, because a lot of things we have always done it this way doesn't mean it's the right way, doesn't mean it complies with the code. And when other cities have done it, it may not mean they are complying with the code. So we are fortunate that we have council members who look in detail on this aspect. I think we are blessed that different council members bring different perspective to look at different things. And if we don't respect that perspective, when we didn't understand, if we didn't give the council member more that leverage, that latitude to go and dig deeper, and we had, if we had shut her down at that time and say, no, don't pull more consent agenda items, we would not be compliant today. And so let's learn from this lesson and respect council members who might need a little more information, so that they feel comfortable with the decision we are making, and not shutting down because we learned the lesson here. That's, appreciate that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. And so I'd like to make some comments, too. I do appreciate, I think Councilmember Moore did a fabulous job, because going to the report, only Morgan Hill, who has a treasurer that's following the rule, and also one city, maybe Campbell, was following the rule. The rest of the cities probably need to appreciate Councilmember Moore's, you know, discovery and the grand jury, and also our finance department really did a great job and follow through. And so thank you, Director Alfaro, too, and your staff. But I do want to say, grand jury report seems to have a lot of credit. So, you know, we need to look at different perspectives. So I would like to have a motion to pass this recommended action, please. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to, move the recommended action.
I'll second.
All right, speak, move a second. Any more further discussions? Let's move by light, please.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Let's move to item number 20. Status update on the sixth cycle housing element update. And if I remember correctly, I think Councilmember Fruin pulled this item out.
Yes, I did. I was hoping that we could get a brief overview of where we are, where we're headed, and then get a couple of answers to questions.
Sure. I believe Acting Director Connolly is also available on Zoom to provide that brief summary. Luke?
Yes, thank you, City Manager Wu. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Pretty much, I don't have a formal staff report prepared, but like the written staff report described, two months ago, November 15th, we had an item before the city council to try to come up with a strategy to expedite the review of the housing element update. And part of that was to take the draft that we had received from our prior consultant in mid-October and get that to HCD as soon as possible. We had to have a public comment period occur that's legally required for 30 days that ended just before the holidays on December 23rd. We've assembled the comments that were received during that time. They were included as an attachment to the staff report. And this was essentially intended as an update to show that that has in fact happened and that we are trying to meet the target date that we talked about in mid-November of having the draft go to the Housing and Community Development Department by January 31, which is the certification date, which obviously, we, like a lot of other cities, aren't meeting. But we wanted to get that to HCD by that time. And I think to reiterate the goal of that, we recognize the draft that we have, as we had talked about, was essentially an administrative or a working draft. We know there are corrections that need to be made in that document. But the goal was to get the document to HCD, to get their 90-day review period started. We can continue to work with our consultant, who we are fully bringing on board, Placeworks, to refine the draft further and set up meetings with HCD's staff. Should we get the draft to them by the end of January, we would anticipate having comments back from them by the end of April. And I think the goal with this is just to get all the pieces moving. One other thing we would have to, as we proceed to refine the draft and ultimately take this back through the Housing Commission, Planning Commission, and of course, the city council, is we would then have a comment letter from HCD, which would cover things like our sites inventory, policies, a full range of issues on the housing element, some of which we've speculated on over the course of the last year in all of the public meetings. So, you know, that's really the goal. And the staff report was intended just to update the council to let you know that the public comment period had passed and that staff is trying to work diligently to finalize the contract with Placeworks and get the draft off to HCD. So I'm happy to answer any other questions, but that was, I think, really the intent of the staff report.
Do council have any questions before I open the public comment?
Yeah, just a few brief ones. First, when I reviewed the comments that were part of this item, I noticed a large number that appeared not to be there, that we had received at council or elsewhere. And I'm just curious as to whether or not you intend to include those in the submission as an attachment, and if not, is there a means for us to add them? So we'll start there.
I don't have it this evening. If that was the goal, to have all of the comments received, those can be assembled and provided to you. Certainly, we're required and fully intend to provide all of the comments to HCD and address them. So I think, as many of the council members and public who are at this meeting tonight are aware, we've had, I think, 27 total meetings dating back to the fall of 2021. Many of those meetings, a lot of comments were received at Planning Housing Commission, City Council. There were three well-attended community meetings held in major lines in September of last year. So all of those comments will need to be provided and addressed in some way. Some may take the form of actually changing the document. Some will be addressed with a quick response. I think, as you can see even from the sample, the comments that were included that we received between November 18 and December 23, some are very brief, pointing out factual errors or grammatical errors. Some are saying, I like the document. Some are saying, I don't like the document. So our goal is to really make the quick fixes and get the document cleaned up in the next couple of weeks to get that to HCD. But certainly, all of the comments that would date back through the public review process could be provided and definitely will be provided to HCD.
Okay, that answers my next two questions, which were really about, you know, what the staff plan was for responding to comments and incorporating the feedback, because that is a regulatory requirement. So I thank you for that. One of the additional follow-ups I had is that there has been significant change in state law between the time that this draft was largely written and the present. And in particular, I'm referring to AB 2011. And I am curious as to whether you and the rest of staff have a plan in place for analyzing capacity and the opportunities that that represents for the housing element.
Yeah, we are working right now to come up with an estimate of what AB 2011, which I believe goes into effect on July 1, what that would mean for this process and for the city of Cupertino. We're, as I said, we have working drafts on that right now. I have had conversations with our housing consultant on how that could affect the housing element. And frankly, right now, there's a lot of uncertainty. It's kind of similar to how SB 9 was looked at, that while there may be significant potential for housing through AB 2011, in HCD's eyes, I think right now it's seen as very uncertain, because it's not even in effect yet. But it would be very good to know, certainly, how that legislation could affect housing capability in major quarters, particularly Stevens Creek. And I think in conjunction, we've had comments in the past about Cupertino has a significant pipeline, number of pipeline units. If, for instance, and I just say if, if we were not to have all of those be credited by HCD, it would then, I think, be a good idea to look at how AB 211 or 2011 could compensate if we have to look for additional housing sites. And that's one of the things that's been an uncertainty that I would hope in the next three to four months, we have a better idea. You know, we currently have our Tier 1 sites and our Tier 2 sites that were approved at the end of August by the city council. But it is difficult to know if we may need to look at alternate locations. And with AB 2011 in play, that could end up being a factor.
Okay, thank you very much. And then my final question is just one more point of clarification, because I've received several emails, and I think all of us on council have, urging a quick send-off to HCD, apparently under the assumption that that means that it is the same as the adoption. And that there, I just wanted to clarify that there is a distinction between adopting a housing element and submitting a draft to HCD.
Yes, we have a long process ahead of us. Nine months is probably the shortest, but I would say between nine months to a year. And they say that particularly since we will be doing an environmental impact report, it's very difficult to shorten that time. So our goal is to get something to HCD by the certification date. That does not mean we have a certified housing element. It just means we have provided it to HCD.
Got it. So as of February the 1st, then, it's an accurate statement to say that we will not have a compliant housing element in Cupertino.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? This is questions, not discussion, from the council members? Councilmember Moore?
Yes, just sort of a timeline question, if someone could kind of recap on when we needed to have a compliant certified plan, what that date is, was. And then how long is our process from beginning to completion actually taking? Because then we can work backwards, and I can think about when we should have actually started, because I am curious about that. If we were to get this done on time, when would we have needed to have begun?
So the deadline for certification is January 31st, the end of this month. I will defer to Luke on the full timeline. I know that we began in sometime in 2021, but I don't have the exact date.
Yeah, I believe it was late September 2021 when the consultant was brought on board. And while I was not with the city at that time, I know there was a public meeting, I believe, in late September and another one in November. There were two in December of last year. So, you know, the formal process began, I would say, in the fall of 2021. It's difficult to say when you would have needed to start in order to make January 31 certification date. A lot of that's driven by how quickly the process moves. Certainly, if you started sooner, you had a greater chance of getting there. But a lot of it is just very process-driven. It's difficult to say if there's a certain date you would have needed to begin by.
Thank you. If there are no que, oh, Councilmember Chow?
Could you please clarify the deadline? Because I remember in 2015, the last housing element deadline was January 31st. And the city certified our housing element on May 19th, I think, 2015. So most of the cities understood January 31st as a deadline to submit rather than certify. But somehow, later last year, I mean, this is, most cities, including San Jose, San Francisco, cities with a whole office of attorneys. But later last year, somehow, that deadline was materialized as it has to be generated. How, why is that different, and how this change happened? Why so many attorney would have missed it?
So a couple of things. Just to be precise, I mean, what the city council is required to do is adopt the housing element, and that adopted housing element needs to be substantially compliant with state law. It's HCD or, you know, hopefully not, but in some cases, courts that determine whether, that, you know, make findings as to whether that compliance is met. So it's, the deadline is to adopt the housing element with the required components. As far as the fifth cycle, there have been intervening changes in law that affect some of these deadlines, so that that might be why you're remembering it differently.
Then how come so many attorneys seems to also misinterpreted or misunderstood the change in law? Has law changed in last October? Because seems people suddenly realized January 31st is a hard deadline, starting from that timeframe.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen a lot of commentary that suggests differently. So if there's, if there are other, if there are, you know, attorneys that are giving different advice, I'm happy, I'd be happy for you to refer that information to me.
I mean, it's famous, San Francisco Chronicle has an article that San Francisco and San Jose got the deadline wrong. It's pretty public.
Well, I think, I don't know if they got the deadline wrong. I think people did not appreciate the full implications of some of the amendments to the statute until we were well into the process.
Oh, so people didn't understand the implication because of the law keep changing every year?
I think that it's either, it was, yeah, I think that the implications didn't really kind of, didn't fully hit until people got quite deep into the process.
My understanding is up until last November, it's an extended deadline for Southern California. And then about two-thirds of the cities are still not compliant, do not still, still don't have the so-called certified housing element. So, but Northern California won't get that extended deadline of 18 months. And so do we have any idea how many cities will be compliant by the hard deadline of January 31st?
I don't have a specific number. There will be many cities that do not meet the January 31st deadline. I don't have a specific number. Luke may have a more detailed estimate.
Through the mayor, if I can bring the point of discussion kind of back to our housing element. And this is an informational update on where we are and what we like to do for our next steps. In regard to the housing element, it is a wild animal. Be more than happy to discuss with you offline in terms of how the state law have changed, evolved, and have different implications.
My question is a question many community members have. That's why I ask.
So we want to bring it back to the subject online. That could be another, you know, discussion later or side discussion. That could be another, you know, discussion later or site discussion. So let's get back to the, our own housing element update. Do we, if no questions, I'm going to open up to the public comment, please. Oh, yes, Vice Mayor Mohan?
Just to clarify, we got a lot of comments from the public, some saying, turn in the draft as is, some saying, let's make all the changes and make it a better document. But I want to make sure that everyone understands that by turning it in now, we're not meeting the deadline. The deadline of January 31st is for the whole completed document. So other than, I think, indicating to HCD that we are serious and that we are turning in something, it doesn't really fulfill the time requirements that HCD has for the completed document.
Senator Chair, Mayor, if I may, and that is absolutely right, Vice Mayor. So we're using the state imposed deadline to have a complaint document for us to make our first draft in. There's no correlation between the two. Other than, like you said, that we're showing our seriousness and our dedication to get the document in ready. But there's no equation between the two, and there's no correlation whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Let's open the public comment. Do we have anyone, someone on Zoom and blue cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have two people on Zoom and we have two speaker, blue speaker cards for--
Okay, yes, all right. So would you like to speak first? Yes, please.
I am very, very familiar with this housing element. And I will tell you that in the last 20 years, this is the third or fourth, there has never been anything like this before. You talk about a dog and pony ride. I was glad to see my comments in this item. I was short and sweet. The Rena numbers were rigged from the beginning. And they did one of the worst things in statistical science. They propagated error as they went along. And that cannot be tolerated. In a scientific method, you do not introduce error and then keep dragging it along with you. And that is what has happened. Well, that's where we are. You know, so I will say right now, I have some legitimate concerns. Yes, let's don't bring up AB 2011. Let's don't build up, bring up the builder's remedy. Southern California was given extra time. I believe it was July 1st that SCAG was given more time. Yes, I have been following the Sandag and SCAG and all over the state. But I have some very, very grave concerns. And I will tell you right now, I didn't appreciate that HCD demanded this stuff over the Christmas holiday. Give me a break. Look what we have been through. The pandemic for three years, then we have this state declared an absolute disaster zone because we have had flooding. No, HCD, like the little nanny state, is demanding that we rezone our entire city to do their Putinist protocol. Yeah, I have a lot of problems with this. But we are saddled with this dog and pony show, and it will continue. So I also have a question on this. And thank you, Luke, and everyone, and the 22 meetings. I spent all my time. I missed one when we went to Florida in, in May, and my mother was in the hospital. Okay, you talk about dedication. And I don't think HCD gives a hang about anybody in this state. We're going down a bad road here. The other thing I wanted to have a question about is what is the EIR that is going on? Could you talk about that a little bit? Is this the thing that's talking about when we will rezone our city? I have no respect for HCD. And if this continues into the next cycle, we're going to have some massive problems and repercussions. And I will tell you right now, this will go to the federal level. I have never seen a state agency such as HCD behave this way. They ought to be taken to task for this, and they ought to be examined because there is more. You follow the money trail. It's a waste of our time and taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Should I go ahead, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay, next we have Connie Cunningham. And on Zoom, we would move to Peggy Griffin and Lisa Warren.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Sheila Moat, and council members. My name is Connie Cunningham, and I've lived here a long time, too. Go figure. I support an ambitious housing element. And unlike the speaker before me, I think that the state has in mind helping literally hundreds of thousands of people in our state find housing. And by requiring cities to plan to build that housing, to ensure that more people than just those of us who currently own homes or can afford to rent homes here can actually live here. I, in fact, am pleased that our state has taken this approach and that they want to provide housing, even though many, many cities do not. I understand the very many issues that go into this, and I don't need to either holler or scream or shout my anger. And I would hope that in the future, perhaps, that whole idea of respect of others would include when we talk about our state government. Because I believe that our state government is working hard to give all of its citizens a place to live. And which I believe, housing is a human right. That's where many of these other problems start, is when people can, don't have a place. How do you live when you're living outdoors? So I take great umbrage to the previous speaker, but that being said, I think I stated my point. I do support an ambitious housing element with lots of planning to put in multi-housing projects. The thing that I wanted to focus on because there was an organization, is an organization, called Cupertino For All, who put in a nice, long letter about various, very good projects that if we could put them in now would be great. But I agree that we should put something in on the 31st as a placeholder and allow the state to see that we are trying and that we care and that we're going to do something. But I wanted to focus specifically on two things. The creation of a tenant relocation assistance ordinance. More rental units have been displaced because of renovations, redevelopment, and similar activities. The other is the rental preservation program, the city providing low-interest rate loans to existing rental property owners. These are two things that would go a long ways to help with our BMR units, which during this eight years are going to come up to mature out of the BMR program. How are we going to keep them here if we do not have those systems in, policies in place before that time? Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Connie. And we will now move to Zoom. We have Peggy Griffin and Lisa Warren. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council members and staff. Hello again, and thank you. I would like to support the staff's recommendation to submit the draft before the deadline with the comments. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, will the identified comments that are just errors in the document be incorporated before the document is submitted, submitted before January 31st? That's my first question. The second question is, where will the public find what's been submitted, the final document submitted to HCD? And I also want to express my hope that when it comes back, and it comes back with HCD's responses, that the public, the Housing Commission, the Planning Commission, all the commissions and the public are, and the council are able to submit and participate in the improvement of the document to submit policies to make this a workable and successful approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And our final speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. And thank you, Peggy, for excellent comments there. So I agree with making this go forward as staff is suggesting where we are now, knowing there's a lot more work to be done. I found some of the council members' questions interesting. And one about the AB 2011 and how that could affect things. On the other side of that, I would be incredibly curious, am incredibly curious, to know if there's, and I know you can't answer this, maybe someone could point to something. If there's been any serious effort, you have the state audit, who, which showed such ludicrous numbers being thrown at every city, what effect that has had on anything and whether that will lessen the load, as I believe it should, but I fear that nothing has been done to correct HCD's poor math. We'll put it, that's just on the flip side, I guess, not quite on the flip side, but just another angle of wondering. I feel like, you know, the city manager called this a wild animal. I would also call it, think you could call it a blender where you have no lid. You just turn that machine on and stuff spews everywhere. And no one can put it back together again because no one has real answers or good goals. And I, it's, it's a horrible thing. I have definitely not as much faith in our state as the previous in-person speaker had. I have good reasons for that. I think everyone has their opinions and, and it's okay to share them. And that's what we need. And, yeah. And I was interested in the answer, and I agree with Luke, Mr. Polly, with the answer of, how do you know when to start? How much time do you allocate for something like this? It depends on who's, who your mules are doing the work and who is participating and how that participation is, is handled. And if you, my belief, and I, this may be rude to say at this point, but my belief is if we had a different consultant who actually gave us a timeline instead of refusing to do so and just ignoring the fact that they should be, we would be in better shape. And so I applaud those that are still working on this, trying to get it done. And that includes staff, that includes council, that includes residents, that includes non-residents. But I will be so glad when this is over, although I'm not sure I'm going to be happy with the result. So I guess that's a bunch of blah blah. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor, that is all.
So we have no more public comments? There are some questions from the public. Should I ask Luke to answer first?
I'll take a step at it. Mayor Way, so there was one question on the EIR. If I can point your attention to page three on the staff report. Staff's already working on the scope of EIR, which is going to be pretty soon taking on its parallel path to the housing element. The EIR itself, it's going to take nine to 12 months. We're hoping to wrap it up. When council is adopting the housing element, you would also certify the EIR. This is going to be a difficult decision, but we're hoping that we will have a compliant document and EIR by January of 2024. So we're about a year out. And then again, I just want, there are a lot of good feedbacks around the members of the public and also council members. I do want to emphasize that we're really hoping to provide an informational update to City Council so that we are submitting the document by January 31st. There's no action for council to take tonight. If you have any more questions, as Councilmember Chow mentioned, that the members of the public have a lot of questions. And that's, I mean, I could see why. This is difficult. Feel free to either contact us, City Manager's Office, or Community Development Acting Director Luke Connolly, or City Attorney's Office. We'll be more than happy to set aside time to go over the questions that you have.
Thank you, City Manager Wu. So I'm going to bring you back to the council for discussions? Nope, okay, anybody? Councilmember Chow?
Okay, I'd like to thank Pamela and Luke for your leadership. As I said in our prep meeting, reading the staff report, I feel like a cloud has lifted. Finally, there is definite timeline on one month, we'll get what done. We never had that last year. And I kept asking, do we have a timeline with specific dates? We never got that. And finally, we have that. I know it's going, it's a challenging timeline. So there's anything that you need from the council to complete, to meet the deadline, you have to let us know. And in terms of scheduling, what, how, we know it's going to be challenging. And, and I understand from the prep meeting that submitting now, even though usually HCD takes the full 90 days to provide response, but you are expecting to start the conversation, maybe get some preliminary comments in 30 days, maybe another one in 60 days. So we, if we work separately, we don't submit, we might be on the wrong track. So submitting now might help us to actually be on the right track to, to have the final And I have a question still. So for both sides of Stevens Creek, it's already zoned residential, and some other areas that's not housing element sites, but they are already zoned residential already with the higher height limit, like 45 feet. So are we going to look into the capacity of those sites that are not on the housing element?
So I'm not understanding your question exactly. So we're taking what the council has adopted site inventory back in August, and we are not making any changes to that.
I know, but I mean, not this one. I mean, in the future. For example, we have the Canyon Crossing project. We had the Beta Brothers projects. Both of those were not housing element sites, but they can develop because they meet the general plan amendment. So, I mean, general plan. So would we be looking into the capacity we have on this non-housing but already zoned residential at their capacity in terms of their general plan capacity?
So not the general plan capacity, but, but planning staff is looking into the capacity in the context of AB 2011, which is generally higher than the general plan capacity. And that, that, that analysis is, is, is in progress.
But then, before 2011, I think Beta Brothers was able to use a density that's higher than its current zoning, and we are required to rezone because they can build to the general plan density. So that density, that means a lot of sites, even whether they are housing element or not. They can build at a higher density than currently zoned. So are we looking into how much capacity we actually have on those sites?
I, Luke should feel free to jump in, but I know, we are, we have evaluated capacity for sites that were selected by council in August. And then there's a separate evaluation that is being done because of AB 2011 and its potential impacts on density in commercial corridors in the city. I'm not aware of any other analysis of capacity that's currently being done.
Now, if I could just jump in and reiterate, City Attorney Jensen is correct. We are doing an AB 2011 analysis, which the Stevens Creek corridor will be a big piece of that. But other than that, the focus has been on the sites that were selected by the City Council at the minimum-- at the minimum densities that were described. That's really it at this point.
Okay. And then we are, our target is to rezone all the necessary sites in one year because we missed the January 31st deadline. So we have to do that, rezone in one year.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Council member Moore?
Quick question. So in the EIR, so we're looking at having the notice of preparation come out at the end of February. So I'm wondering, looking at the AB 2011 sites, it almost looks like you've got an even further expanded project that's going to need to be evaluated. Has that changed the equation for us a little bit?
It may have. I would say that those, how, how to deal with alternatives is a discussion that's still underway with our consultant. So, but certainly we are thinking about these things in that context. You can be assured.
All right. And through the mayor, I've mentioned this before. I think that the baseline for this is going to be interesting because of the Valco project. All right, thank you.
Okay, if there are no more discussions, we don't need to make decisions. There is no decision to make on this one. I'd like to beg a pull. Do we need a five minutes break from council and staff? Yes. So it is 9:40 now. Let's come back in 9:45. Thank you. Public, we are a few minutes late. Next time I might make it a eight minutes break instead of a five minute break. So let's go back to our agenda. We are moving on to number 23. Consider authorizing the director of public works to reject all bids received for the Blackberry Farm Pool improvements capital improvement program project. May we, may I know who approved the item? I didn't quite. Council member Chow? Okay, so I'm going to have the floor for you to ask the questions first.
We don't have a staff report. We do have staff available to answer your question.
Okay. I prepared this slide myself. So I pulled that because I thought the agenda description is a little, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I pulled the item because I thought agenda description is a little incomplete, and I'd like to be more transparent on what this agenda is. The title says rejecting all bids, but staff recommendation is to re-advertize as two separate projects. One is accessibility and the other one is pool conditioning. Staff report says there's no budgetary, additional budget requested. However, the $750 allocated this year is only, is for both projects. It's for both accessibility and pool reconditioning. Now, because of the increase in construction labor costs, I guess, that's overall, the $750 will only cover pool reconditioning. So I thought this should be clarified that this actually is a budget amendment because we are actually amending the budget so that the current year budget only cover, reduce the scope of the project. And then another budget request would be necessary to cover the accessibility portion. So I think this kind of item, when we need an increase in budget, even though it's, it's not this current year, shouldn't be on the consent agenda. We should have, have more visibility on that. Thank you.
Does city manager staff want to answer council member Chow's question?
I'll take a stab at it, and I know Susan's available to fill me in. Council member Chow, so the only action we're asking council is to authorize public works director to reject a bid. We're not asking council to do any budget allocation, knowing that the scope from the original CIP has increased. So if we do republish the RFP and with higher bids, we will be asking council to provide budget allocation, but not at this time. But I do appreciate the comments. Susan, did I lose any, did I miss anything?
No, thank you, city manager Wu. That seems correct.
So if I understand correctly, the only we're passing is to authorize that the director of public works reject all bids and has nothing to do with budget or anything else. That's the only motion that we're going to make.
That's the action we're asking council to take. Through the mayor, council member Moore has a question.
Thank you, city manager. So I'm just a little curious about, you know, for our edification, because this item's going to come back to us and it's, and it's altered from, a little bit, from the original CIP plan that was going to happen there. So just, if you could, this could also be by memo. Just how does that work? Because we approved a certain project and now it's kind of altered. So what, how, we've, okay, thank you.
Through the mayor, that is a great question. This is probably where I need Susan to help me out. But when this does come back, when the RFP does come back, you're absolutely right. The scope has increased from the originally approved CIP list. Susan, I believe this would have to be in the new CIP project for next year's budget if we're ready, or a complete separate process?
If I may, I wouldn't mind backing up and giving a little bit more background information. Maybe that'll clarify.
Go for it.
Council, mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Susan Michael, the CIP manager. And in December, at the December 6th council meeting, we came and asked council to allow the city manager to authorize the award of a construction contract if the bids received from the public bid process were within budget. We did this in order to facilitate starting the construction and finishing the construction prior to the facility opening in the summer. However, the bids that we received were not within budget by a significant amount. So we realized those bids, there were two that were qualified, both had the work for the actual pool repair. That section of the bid was within budget. It was the scope of work that was added by the building permit process, which I can come back to, that for the accessibility of the facility, that was two times what we estimated that were to be. So we're asking city council to reject the bids and staff plans, similar to what council member Chow said, to split the bid into two. So we'll have a bid for just the pool improvements. That will be a public process. We'll go back out. And then the other bid would be for the accessibility work. So when, just to explain the amount of accessibility work. So when you go in to do a project, like the repairs to pools, you're required to give a construction permit from the building department. As a part of that process, they require that all projects be brought up to full accessibility. If the scope of the work to improve the facility to full accessibility is greater than the cost of the work, the original scope, then you're allowed to apply for a hardship. And we are applying for that so that we would only be required by the permit to 20% of the scope of work as, for the accessibility. So what we've realized in the process, the scope of work right now, according to the bids received for the accessibility exceeds the scope of work of the original project. So we're going to go back to the building department and clarify this scope of work that is required for the accessibility. And our intent is that that will bring the cost of the project back down to be within budget. And just to be clear, it is a priority of the public works department in the city at large to make our facilities accessible. We are just trying to, within the scope of this project, to bring the budget and scope in line. Hopefully that helps clarify. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Susan. Do we have more questions from the council? Council member Chow?
So how much the additional spin-off project would cost for the accessibility portion? I think I asked in my email, but I forgot the amount. Like 600,000?
I'm sorry, may I ask clarification? Are you asking how much, if we were to proceed with the project as bid, how much extra money we would require?
Yeah, for the both portion, I guess, how much the second portion, the accessibility portion, you would request for the next fiscal year?
So if you include the cost of the design services spent to date, as well as permit fees and a construction management fee, as well as a contingency, we estimate the total cost of the project as it stands today to be 1.2 million dollars. We have 750,000 dollars approved, so that would be almost an additional 500,000 dollars.
So 1.2 million for both portion, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, thank you. I just wish that the agenda title could be a bit more transparent. This increase in costs, since we are not just rejecting all the bids, the accessibility portion is required, a legal requirement. We cannot escape that. So this should have been an amendment of budget. Then that's more clear. Thank you.
Through the mayor, so council member Chow, I definitely hear your concern, but in my opinion, that would confuse the matter. Because what we're, what we're asking council again is to reject a bid. When the project and the bids are available for you to take consideration to amend the budget, we'll provide that information in the background.
Okay, thank you. I think the rest of the information is for information only right now. So if there is no more discussions, may I have a motion to, so?
Uh, mayor?
Oh, sure. Vice mayor Mohan, you first, because you haven't spoken yet.
Yeah, my, my question was, and I actually had an opportunity to discuss it with the city manager a couple of days ago. So I did get most of the clarification that I wanted, that there is enough in this year's budget for the first part of the project. And the additional amount that council member Chow referenced is going to be part of next year's budget. And that's correct, right?
That is correct. So, so there's only a certain amount that's being allocated to the project because the scope has increased. The budget allocation or amendment will have to come through next year's budget as the new CIP.
Right. However, I did want to commend you and your staff for thinking about the public and sort of making sure that the pool was going to stay open through the summer months.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there is no more questions, may I have a motion to authorize that, as recommended?
Mayor, if you have one, one hand raised on Zoom?
Oh, okay. We have more questions?
I have one person that has requested to speak on public comment.
I thought that, oh, I did not open the public comment. Oh, I'd like to open the public comment, please.
Peggy Griffin, I will allow you to talk. Welcome Peggy.
Thank you, city council staff. A couple of things. One was that director Susan Michael had her hand raised for a comment, and I was wondering what she wanted to say. The other thing is, question. Is it possible, if you split it up into the work that needs to be done and the accessibility portion, is it possible that a grant can be obtained to cover accessibility? Just a question. And I also wanted to thank CIP manager Michael because every time she's presented, her answers are clear, her presentations are easy to understand, and she answers questions directly. Thank you.
So can we have the answer from Susan first?
Yes.
Susan, you're on.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for the comments. The, what we will hope to do is go out for bid again for the pool work. We have no reason to believe that that will increase, and that is about half of the budget. That is 750, it's approximately in the 400 range, 450, I can't remember exactly. But then if the accessibility scope is required to only be 20% of that amount, then we hope to have a scope of work that is closer to 100,000 dollars. And then that would not require extra funding. That was all I was going to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Council member Chow, you got your light on?
Yeah. So here is a staff report that we have, and under fiscal impact, it says no additional appropriation requested at this time. Of the amount that's allocated is enough for the construction. From what we understand, this amount does not cover the project that, that this 750,000 is allocated for. So I hope in the future, this kind of fiscal impact, even though it's not right at this agenda item, it should still be listed under fiscal impact because it's impacting the next year's budget. And because the budgeted amount, the item that's covered by the budgeted amount is different. So just so that we are transparent about the actual fiscal impact of this request. Thank you.
Does the staff want to answer, or we're okay with it? Okay. Yeah, so if not, if no more questions, more questions? Okay, council member Moore, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to be real quick about it. I just, I'm curious. So the, when it says pool improvements in that, in that statement that we just saw, that is for the pool, that's not the ADA. The ADA will come later. Is that correct? I just, I'm curious what the order is, because you're mentioning that it's coming back in the CIP. Is it going to go pool improvement first, ADA second, or is this, are you going to try to swap those?
This is beyond my public works capacities. I'm going to turn it over to Susan.
Okay. I'm just thinking about the timeline. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, council member Moore. We do not expect to need to return to council with this project. If the rebidding process is successful, we would come back with asking you to award the two construction contracts that we would be doing simultaneously, at least in terms of awarding. So we would award for the pool improvements work, and then we also would award for everything else, which includes accessibility work and a minor drain reconnection thing. It's possible that we would award the pool improvement work first and get that done, and then follow up with the accessibility work. But the intent is that the scope would fall, and the funding would fall under the purview of the current approved project.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Susan. If there's no more questions, may I have a motion to approve the recommended action, please?
I move to approve this item.
And second?
I second.
Okay. Moved by Chow and seconded by Mohan. May I have a light vote, please?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Let's move to item number 26, which is consider Lawrence, Mitty Park, and Trail Project Design Direction Following Community Outreach Results. And I believe council member Chow pulled it, or? Oh, council member Moore pulled it.
I pulled it, and it's going to be very, very quick because I got the answer I'm looking for from, from staff. So if we could have a super brief staff report and something mentioning about council input on this item, I think that will settle this pretty quickly. Thank you.
May we have a staff report?
Sure. Susan, are you doing this one too? Go ahead.
I am doing this one. And I will say that we have come to council to ask for your blessing. Sorry, Susan Michael, CIP manager, thank you for counsel. I always forget sometimes to follow the rules. And we are coming to you to ask for your approval of the design direction that the community has landed upon. And we, what has happened in short is that we presented, we developed three preliminary design options. We went back to the community and asked for their preferences, We went back to the community and asked for their preferences, and we did this with meetings and, um, online, commissions, surveys, um, in person, various opportunities. And the pickaway was that of the three options, their preferences are blending of the two. Uh, the nature, um, trail one, I always get the name wrong, sorry. And, um, the story trail, which is mostly a nature park, and the play, which is the last one. And, um, I will share, uh, to address councilmember Moore's, um, question specifically, a graphic that I developed. Hopefully, this is good. Let me see if I can share my screen. Forget how to do this. Can you see that?
Yes.
So this was the graphic that we have included, that was included in the previous presentations um, to the commissions and community, that we did a site analysis, we developed the community vision, developed the design alternatives, and that we are here now to confirm the direction that we have received from the community with council before we go much further. And then we will develop designs and the environmental report. I, um, developed a graphic to expand that, to really show what's left. And, um, we're still here between having done design options and coming back and, we've had three options here, with number three. Number four, we will design the final conceptual design. It's still early in the process to say there's a lot left to do here. Uh, then we'll do an environmental review, and that includes environmental permitting. And then we're going to, at that point, develop the schematic design. So once we have the feedback from the environmental reports, as well as the community and the council, we will develop the, the next level of the design. And that is when we will come back to you, uh, once again. So you'll, you'll hear from us at this point. We'll need, this is a decision point. And then we'll come back again. We'll have the environmental information, and then we'll go into construction documents, bidding and construction.
Thank you, Susan.
Short version, I hope that helps. Thank you.
Questions?
No, I just, I want to thank Susan for the report. Uh, one little bit of input. Um, a couple of years ago, the green stormwater infrastructure, um, came to the, the planning commission, and I'm wondering about that because it's, one of the things I had brought up there a couple of years ago was that we've got all this water coming off of Lawrence and coming through there. And I'm hoping that there'll be some consideration of that in the design that we can help before that water gets to, to the creek. Um, I think that would be great if we had some sort of bio swale in there or something like that. It'd be awesome. So I'm, I'm very excited about this, um, project moving forward. And it looks like we've got another couple of check-ins, so we'd be able to add input. And it's very cool. Thank you.
Um, so we're in the question part. I want to open the public comment. Do you have a question or comment? Okay, so let's open up for the public comment first. Do we have cards?
We have one blue speaker card and one commenter online. Jennifer.
Okay, so maybe the speaker first? Go ahead.
Uh, yes, I, my, we're so pleased with the consultant. Susan has just done what a wonderful job. Staff has, um, I think that I've been out there almost as many times as I've been to the housing element meetings. Um, and we're very, very pleased. There is a ton of water out there now. I mean, we had a discussion about, I think it was a month ago, about whether water was going to be coming down Saratoga Creek. It is hauling down there. I think people need to remember that that, that area, that corner carries a tremendous amount. I would say there's a good 20 vertical feet of it. And a tree fell down about a week ago. Caltrans got out there, and it was, it blocked part of the bridge. Um, but we're really, really pleased about it. And I think that the public has really made it known what they're, um, they, they want an area where they can go out and see nature, uh, you know, have maybe some playgrounds for the kids, have a trail that you can walk on, the bicycles people can head on down. We haven't figured out the other part where the tree fell down. But I think it's really just going to be absolutely fantastic. I do think that you might need to put an extra fencing along the narrow part that comes, Sterling Barnhart comes out this way, then you get into the Saratoga Creek portion. And right past where the midi crosswalk is, there is a section that's very narrow, and someone actually fell in the creek there. So you might need to put some extra fencing on there. My husband was actually down there at the point where somebody, I think Caltrans was hauling him out. So anyway, congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. And we have Jennifer Griffin and Peggy, Jennifer Sharon and Peggy Griffin on Zoom. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Um, I decided to call in, even though I was there earlier. Uh, good evening again. As a resident on the east side of Cupertino and someone that uses the Saratoga Creek Trail often, I'm very familiar with the Lawrence Smithy Park area. I've also read carefully over the proposed concepts for the Lawrence Smithy Park and have provided previous feedback on these proposals. I wanted to, to speak just because I'm known as a strong bike peddler advocate. So naturally, I think a lot of people would assume that I would really be supporting the wheel fun concept. But really, I think that the staff did a great job. I've got a lot of input from residents, and the story trail is the best thing for us. So, um, I wanted to just put in my, my two cents that this, I think, is something that would be the best for the most number of residents. So I encourage you tonight to improve that project design and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And our final speaker on Zoom is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Uh, thank you, city council staff and, um, CIP manager Michael. I agree with Jennifer Sharon's statements. Um, I think that the way you decided what was best will fill the need of the most people. Um, my concern is, uh, Saturday, when I went by driving down Lawrence, there were at least two homeless encoutments, which means that they broke through the fencing. And it was a day when the, it was raining hard and the water was running swiftly. And so my concern is for the safety of the individuals that are unhoused. Uh, and, uh, maybe additional fencing needs to be done, or, uh, maybe a relocation. Anyway, um, I'm concerned for their safety. And, uh, and thank you for the effort, the work that has been done. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Peggy. And mayor, uh, looks like Lisa Warren raised her hand during that time. Okay, thank you. Welcome, Lisa.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be late, but, um, I, I wasn't going to speak until Peggy mentioned the unhoused, because I saw the same thing. I actually took pictures, which I offered to send to staff, but they weren't needed because I sent an email and I got an answer that there's an awareness of the, actually growing. And, and just so people know, this is, there's people living not just beyond the fences, but up south on the trail from the bridge, there's, there's another group. And it was very apparent the day I would notice on the road. And then I went on foot to see what I could see on the trail part, not the closed off part. Um, it was the one sunny day we had for a very long time. And so it was very obvious because these individuals were drying out their, you know, their shelter and their clothing and, and furniture and whatever. So it was moved where it was more visible and being dried for their comfort, which is completely understandable. But it really emphasized how many people are using this area, um, as a home. And anyway, I got answers I needed from staff. They didn't need my pictures because they'd already seen it. I don't know if they saw the extent that I saw. But, um, anyway, that's enough for this purpose. But I'll check in with someone later about how that's going. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm going to close the public comment session and come back to council. Do we have any, uh, discussions? Councilmember Chow? Um, actually, first I have a question that I actually got answered from staff, but I think public probably wants to know. I think some of the public mentioned, uh, like 30% of them would like a sound wall and the restroom, or maybe 30 to 40%. So I'm just wondering, are they included in the final concept we are approving?
Um, so I, my understanding is that that will be included in the final design. Um, this is the high-level conceptual, and we definitely heard from the, um, the community that bathroom, uh, sound walls, and a number of features are highly desired. So that will be coming back to council in the final design.
But like the location detail will be determined later?
Yeah, because we're the conceptual level right now.
Okay. Then, um, another thing, next it's comment. I think, um, Lawrence Smithy Park, I think Public Works really has done a great job in outreach in all our park, park projects. Lawrence Smithy, Jolly Man, and Memorial Park. So I really commend them for that. And, but I'm a little disappointed with the amount of data in the agenda packet. There was only one presentation. I would have hoped to see the, the real survey because a lot of times how you ask survey question affect the result. I, not just, here is a bar chart. And also, I usually like to read what people write in free response, uh, comments if there is, is there. So if that can be improved, that would be great for future, future presentation. And also, I always would ask, what's the recommendation of our commission? Um, Parks and Rec, I understand, have received presentation, but they, um, the staff report did not mention a recommendation from them. And it seems they have some comments. So their recommendation and comments from commissions should be an essential part of the staff report because we, they dedicated their time to attend all the meetings. And on the important project, that's going to be over 5 million dollars. I think we need to respect their inputs. So if that could be included in future staff, staff report, that would be really appreciated. Thank you. And I believe this also went to bike and ped. So that, that you, you really have done a great job in outreach to all the commission, relevant commissions. Thank you for that. So to follow council member Chow's question, um, are the recommendations or, um, you know, opinions from both commissions being incorporated, will be incorporated into the design considerations?
I, I believe, um, those feedbacks and the comments from both commissions, public committees have been incorporated. Uh, councilmember Chow's comments are well considered. Um, given, again, we're at the very high level, uh, we don't really want to turn this into a 20-page report, but we definitely hear your concern, and we'll take that into consideration for future preparation.
More council discussions? If not, I would like to entertain a recommend, uh, proposal for, uh, motion for the recommended action, please.
Okay. Oh. I move to approve the staff recommendation for the final design.
And councilmember?
I will second that.
All right, we have motion and a second. Uh, Madam City Clerk, may we have a light vote, please?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Now we, um, have concluded all the items. We are moving to council and staff comments and future agenda items, which is the last item on our, um, agenda. We're hoping to finish by 10:30. We're very close. Okay, so any council and staff comments and future agenda items proposals? Yes, please. Councilmember Chow?
So I think, um, the public has spoken on the Lehigh Cement. The county is, uh, I wonder if it's time for this council to provide a letter to support, um, certain position the county is taking? Is that something, um, the council think?
My question is, is it too early to do it? Or, um, or do we have concrete things to propose during, at this time? Um, that's my question.
I think.
I don't know if anybody knows.
So, so I, I think either council, or it may have been the mayor, did provide a letter in support of the general direction that, that Supervisor Semidion and the Board of Supervisors are taking. I think the question will be sort of what the, what's the next logical step in, in the process? And, um, I, we are, both Pamela and I are gathering more information about sort of what this process might look like and sort of what direction it might go as between the county and Lehigh. So, um, I'm sure there will come a time where that, there's, it's appropriate for council to speak up. I'm just not sure we're at a stage i- in the process right now where there's much that's changed since we last commented.
When did we last comment?
Um, I believe, uh, former mayor Paul, um, issued a statement, also a press release in support of Supervisor Semidion's.
Oh, that was for the closing of the, the, the.
The cement plant.
That was closed, uh, two, three years ago.
No, this was recent. This is about November.
Yeah, there was a comment on the closing.
I know, it's a letter.
And I believe, I, I, I would have to check this, but I believe when Semidion, Supervisor Semidion announced his, his plans to, to, to try to seek the, the closure, we also provided comments on that. So, so, uh, you know, and both of those were appropriate. And I think there will be a phase probably coming up fairly soon where Cupertino's voice is going to make a difference. I just, I, I would say at this point, we're, we're in more information gathering mode.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. And, uh.
Any more, councilmember?
Oh, I think one member of the public asked about where to report water waste. I just want to say you can Google "report water waste." There are sites on the Valley, Valley Water site to report. And they're, they will first provide a warning and then, then if people, they will try to work with residents to be compliant. If not, there could be a fine.
Thank you. I think that's good information. And, um, shall we let councilmember Moore go second? Nope. Anybody has other comments? Or councilmember Chow, you have more comments?
I think I said that, this one already. The monthly treasurer's report will be on to, and accounts payable on the treasurer's website. I think we mentioned that, right? We don't need to, it's not, it's not an agenda item.
All right. Would you like councilmember Frum? Your hands is on the button.
Sure. So I really, especially in response to, um, commentary from the public, like to bring back for reconsideration to council the question of, um, the council's decision on the city hall as of November the 15th, 2022.
So, um, do we have a second for that? I actually will second that. Any more comments or proposals? Go ahead, Vice Mayor Mohan.
Uh, thank you, mayor. I was hoping that since we had these fairly, um, strict deadlines for the completion of the housing element, uh, report, that we could sort of track it if it's just even in the city manager's report, something every, uh, every time we have a meeting to show us where we are. Just in case we go off track, at least we, we won't be surprised. Or we, we shouldn't be going off track, but at least there won't be any surprises in, in the event that there is a delay at some point.
So through the mayor, um, in my weekly newsletters to council, if there is a significant milestone, I usually bring it up. And also, I try to make a point of bringing you an update during our one-on-one. But your comment is well noted. Um, if there is a milestone that CDD has reached, for instance, by January 31st, we made a submiddle, you'll be the first to know. So I'll make that commitment to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more? Councilmember Moore?
Uh, yes. So I, I would like, uh, for us to have a, an update on the CD TFA audit at some point, preferably before, uh, there's a consideration for spending, uh, great.
preferably before there's a consideration for spending a great deal of money on an alternative project. Thank you.
So we currently don't have any update, but I definitely hear you. So as soon as we do have an update, we'll provide an update to council.
Through the mayor, then perhaps we could have a memo to the council members so that they can be brought up to date because they haven't had all of the background, the new council members in particular. Thank you.
So go ahead, Councilmember Chow.
And this, so I'm on the Cal Cities Committee, Policy Committee, and the one thing that they mentioned that will come back this year to the legislature is the online sales tax. And that, I think last last year when it was proposed, Cupertino was very concerned because it would affect our allocation of the Apple online sales. And if this bill comes back, it will have significant impact on our revenue. And so since we don't, probably are not going to have Legislative Review Committee, then maybe this is something also the new council member should get a memo on, on what's the state, what state proposed? How would that impact us? So we have some understanding. Then likely when something is proposed, they'll they know what to watch out for.
So through the mayor, Chris and I can work on a memo together, piggybacking on the CD TFA memo.
Yeah, and I think we can get information from our lobbyist on the legislative affairs in Sacramento from last year.
Thank you. Any more recommendations? Discussions?
Yes, through the mayor, if I may, I just want to make sure that we, I got everything. So I did not hear a second on Councilmember Chow's Lehigh future agenda proposal. But we will try, we'll put the treasurer's report and AP on the website. I'll follow up with Director Alfaro. Councilmember Moore has a question.
I was wondering if I could have a repeat of Councilmember Chow's Lehigh suggestion? Because I might second it.
If I were to interject, I loved idea, but this is not the time yet because we don't have any idea. So if I could, when the time is right, to bring a, either a proposal or a follow-up on Lehigh back to council. As far as I know, that county of supervisors working on their reclamation plan. But it's going to take about nine to twelve months.
So, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Maybe I understand that. So maybe then it's probably a memo summarizing what the city has done in this issue so far for the information so that remind us and the new council members what we have done. Since the letters we have sent, what kind of positions we took.
Are you referring to only what happened in twenty twenty-two or going back in the beginning of time?
Since two thousand nineteen, I think we have done some work on that area.
So I think, so we certainly have had provided a number of reports to council on Lehigh since then. I think it would be feasible to update those reports.
Yeah, and then provide them information, yeah.
So can it be just be an information item only?
I was hoping for a memo via email sent to all the council. Yeah, okay.
Through the mayor, I'd like to have some information that would let us know the differences between the twenty twelve reclamation plan and the twenty nineteen one and what they're planning. Because I'm hearing from the public something about the using it essentially as a clean fill place, which was the twenty nineteen version. So I want to understand what, where they're at right now and what the differences, real high level, the differences between twenty twelve, using the the material storage that they had on site to fill twenty twelve, twenty nineteen, importing the fill thirty years, six hundred truck trips per day. If you could, real high level, just fill us in on what's going on right now. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we could work on that.
So just kind of following up, so we'll prepare a memo for council on Lehigh. As I mentioned, we will have the treasurer's reports and the account payable published on the website. I'll follow up with Director Alfaro. We'll have a memo explaining the CD TFA background and also the position this upcoming legislation after consulting with our lobbyists added to the CD TFA memo also provided to council. We will have any milestone related to the housing element, provide an update either in my weekly emails or during our one-on-ones or during the city manager's update to council and also members of the public. The only future agenda item that I have received is the city hall renovation. That was proposed by Councilmember Frun and seconded by Mayor Way.
Just one comment. We're asking for a lot of informations. I would hope that you would prioritize it and so, because you have work to do, we have work to do. So if you feel that you need more time, let us know.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, can, sorry.
Go ahead.
One more item that I brought up in December, I think the hybrid meeting will officially end on February twenty-eighth. I requested at the time that we send a message to all the commissioners because the current municipal code, the council had the option of attending virtually, but the commissioners has no such option. They probably didn't know and we should inform them that. That because in case they have travel plans, they probably need the arrangement that they should be expected to attend all meetings in person from the end of February.
Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's an action council is yet to take to require all the commissions to come back in person.
I mean, likely, but they should be warned.
They will be required by, absent narrow exceptions, they will be required to attend in person after February.
Yeah.
I think Councilmember Chow just want us to notify the commissioners.
Yeah, I think we need to warn them. This is coming and, yeah.
Because I kind of agree because they kind of get used to having Zoom. So maybe a real notification set from which date on you need to come in person and is where you're going to meet, things like that will be good for them to know. Yes.
Two people I talked to were very surprised that they will be, it has to be in person. There is no virtual option. They didn't know that.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, I'm sorry to add one more. We all received an email from a parent whose adult child wanted to get a place in Cupertino and they were noting how many homes were vacant. And, and we have mentioned in the past a vacancy tax and Oakland has a vacancy tax and I'm wondering if there's any appetite from the council for us to look into one with the potential of putting it on the ballot in twenty twenty-four, November twenty twenty-four with that, with that election. And so I'm hoping there is some support for that and I'm just putting that out there.
So before we have any support, I do believe, yes, I know Oakland passed it. I think statistics say even we passed it, the housing produced from it is very limited.
Excuse me, sorry, Mayor, point of order.
Okay, got it. Okay. So do we have a second?
Before, before you take a vote, I'm sorry. So I just kind of want, and I know that I'm crossing that line. I just want to provide a little bit of background. If we were to put this on a future agenda item, this is on a very aggressive timeline to make the ballot. A project of this size usually will come to us to staff as a work program item because it will take a lot of staff resource. If, my understanding is this is hoping to be on the twenty twenty-four ballot. That means I would need a lot of staff resource to focus on this project. Just want to put the caution out there.
Ready?
So considering that especially, I think we at least need to know what's involved, what's the timeline, if it's, if, because in case it's something we want to consider, we have to put that on the next year's work program or even earlier. So I think it's, I don't know whether it's necessary for Cupertino yet until we look at the data. But I know San Francisco has a lot of vacant homes. I just send my son there. So I think we need to look into this option at least.
Can I at least get a more refined scope so we can come back with more research? So are you looking at vacancy tax on residential, non-residential? How long? I mean, which models that we should look into?
I think, I think we would need to have an agenda item to get that direction from council.
So, yeah.
Given the, given the amount of research that's involved and, and, you know, given our earlier discussion about council procedures, this is, this is, we would want to have an agenda item to get direction from council before investing that amount of effort.
So I guess, so the agenda item will be likely, we will be briefed on, here is a timeline, in case we want to do it. But another detail about whether we should do it.
What I, what I would recommend is if there's, there's an interest in putting this on agenda, would just have, just be a referral to staff to, to report on on, on, on the, sort of the effort, you know, what would be required to implement a vacancy tax and then to get direction on as to what the tax would be directed at, you know, as, you know, just residential or residential and non-residential. So, because that, that, you know, and then, you know, that would give staff direction to actually do the research. You know, and I think it's a significant enough project that I would recommend that the full council would vote on that before it's undertaken.
Through, through the mayor.
So do, go ahead.
When you're, when you're looking into it, please look into the legality of having just one type of property be, be taxed because looking at Berkeley's BSEP tax. So just do that research because I'm not sure if it applies.
So that would be the kind of direction we would want to get from council from and during an agenda, from an agendized item.
Okay, so just, but you'll do your, your homework on that. So we don't say, hey, we'd like to only tax this. And then we find out, oh, after the fact, no, you can't do that. So.
Well, I guess a point of clarification, piggyback on what Chris mentioned, is that if we do get a second vote on this future agenda item, we'll be coming back clarifying from council and give full council support on what you like staff to study on. So we will not come back and providing a timeline and providing the research. We're coming back to you to refine that scope.
Okay, that's fine. All right, thank you.
Okay, so I second that.
Okay, so we do have a second. All right. Any more proposed future agenda items?
No proposed future agenda item. Mayor Way, if I could just kind of follow up on our study session item that we didn't get through tonight. So I was hoping, and since I have the full council, to pull your availabilities on January twenty-fifth. And the study session will start at four and tentatively scheduled through eight o'clock. That will allow four hours for council to go through two items. And per Councilmember Chow's motion, this will discuss both the council procedures and also the commission consolidation and hoping to come back on February seventh for the actual adoption of the resolution and also the ordinance amendment. And there's one more small ask if I can, given that we're all going to be away in Sacramento and knowing that most of the council members already have your suggested additions written up, if I can have them sent to Chris and I by tomorrow so that we can include it for you to consider. Given that staff report, I mean, if we're to pull a special meeting on the twenty-fifth, staff report needs to be put together. We'll all be away. Chris is working, but, so if we can get what you have right now as a starter. I know Councilmember Moore, you had a list. I know Councilmember Chow had a list. As long as we have something to start off and you can always send this update by tomorrow. If I can, I'll have Deborah follow up, but that is the time I'm looking at. Councilmember Moore has a question, Mayor.
Through the mayor, I, probably by the end of the day tomorrow, they'll be able to polish it up so that it'll, it'll look tidier for you. I can do that. But I'm going to have to edit it to clean it because I was adding in the other, the other edits.
It's fair. Let's say maybe by five o'clock tomorrow, in between sessions that you're attending.
That'll work.
Okay, so availability. You're good, you're good. I'm good. Councilmember Chow and Councilmember Frun?
Part of me looks good, but I don't have access to one of my professional calendars here.
Okay.
So I tentatively, yes.
Okay.
I will confirm that for you once and for all.
Sounds good. And I'll definitely have Deborah confirm that with the time as well.
So it's four to six o'clock?
Four to eight, eight or nine.
Okay, so if that's the last item, may I adjourn the meeting? The meeting is adjourned. Not too bad. Ten forty-five.